Good evening. I'm calling this meeting of the Barrington Town Council to order at 7:00 PM. All members of the Barrington Town Council are present. Please rise and join me in our Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming tonight and thank you for being masked. That is the rule that we are following. Just so that everyone understands, we are required to hold these meetings live. That's the Open Meetings Act. There was a suspension of that rule or that statute that ended earlier this year. And there have been a number of us who've asked that it be reinstituted so that people could feel more comfortable and wouldn't feel that they are being put at risk by coming to the meetings. But for now, we are following the law, so we will be holding our meetings live. And we're grateful that you could be here. We're going to try to articulate as best we can through the masks, so we'll get through this together. I want to ask our town manager to take us through the announcements first, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, this Wednesday, October 6th, at 4:30, there'll be an outdoor movie night at the library, just behind the library. That's at 4:30 this Wednesday. This coming Saturday will be the Great Pumpkin Harvest Party, and that's going to be from 1:30 to 4:00 PM. On Monday, October 11th, Columbus Day, we'll have our third and fourth annual Barrington Day of Caring from 12 to 4:00 PM. We'll meet here in front of Town Hall. We have seven projects out in town where we're going to help elderly and disabled folks with their yard work. It's all going to be outdoor work, and we're looking for a labor force. So if you're available on Monday afternoon, please meet us here at noon. We'll put you to work for a couple of hours, helping the less fortunate of our community. Community shred is going to be Saturday, October 30th, from 9:00 to 11:30 at the DPW Garage. If you have any shredding you need done, just throw it in your car and bring it over, and we'll get it shredded for you. Senior tax exemption forms are due on Sunday, October 31st, for all senior tax exemptions. And finally, our tree planting and removal. To date this year, annually, we've removed 80 trees and we planted 93 trees. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Before we get into our consent agenda, I wanted to give an opportunity to members of the council to highlight anything that they felt they wanted to draw attention to that is in the consent agenda. If you want to have a separate vote on something, we can certainly remove it, as we do in the normal course. But I thought this would be an opportunity for us to highlight anything, and I'll start. We just finished last month, September, flying the flag for our first responders. These are folks I've often said who we don't really appreciate until we need them, our fire department and our police department. And we often encounter them when we're at our worst. And when we're at our worst, they're at their best. So we spent last month trying to show our appreciation, but we ought not to do that just once a year. We ought to try to, for all of us, even those of us who just see them going by, and it's fortunately not them coming to our house, we ought to try and show our appreciation for them and for the great job they do. Does anyone else on the council have anything they'd like to draw attention to? Yes, Jacob.
I had a question on the HR report, but it's not something that'll change a vote, so I thought I'd say it now rather than pull it.
Okay.
I saw that the negotiations had begun for the union contracts, and I was curious what the timeline is for those and if it's something that the new town manager would be able to weigh in on, since that manager would own those contracts because they start six months into next year.
We has successfully negotiated tentative agreements with all four collective bargaining units in town. We will have those presented to the council in the executive session at the November meeting.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay. The next several items on our agenda are what we call the Consent Agenda. These are items that are usually considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There won't be a separate discussion on these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, and the request is for good cause. In which event, we'll remove that particular item and vote on the remainder of the consent agenda, and then address that item, the removed item separately. Is there anything that any council member would like to remove from the consent agenda for a separate vote? Okay. Any citizen. Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Great. Next item on our agenda is to discuss and act on interviews and appointments. The first one is for Discover Newport. So before we even get into these, we had a late addition. We have a citizen who wanted to volunteer for this and just found out about it. We could not vote to add that person tonight because they're not on here. We could interview them and then postpone the vote until later, but I wanted to see whether the council had any interest in interviewing that applicant who just submitted an application today. I'm not even sure he's here. Don't see him here anyway. Matt?
No.
No. Okay. So he is not here.
Well, Mr. Ameral did reach out to me. I'm familiar with him. He's an active member of the community. He is the acting chair of the Economic Development Commission. I think he's done an excellent job. He is running multiple businesses, and it was an oversight on his part. And I would favor interviewing him at the next meeting and then making our appointment then, not necessarily because I favor him over another candidate, but I would give him that opportunity. I understand that there can be different views on this. I wanted, and the only thing I indicated to Mr. Ameral was that I would bring this forth to the council and survey, with the president's approval, the opinion of my colleagues on the subject.
So since he's not here this evening, we wouldn't be interviewing him, but we could certainly postpone it, depending on the will of the council, postpone a final decision. That is, interview the folks who are here, and I don't know if both of the applicants are here, but if one of them is not, we could also interview that person at our next meeting too. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say on that?
I think the only thing I'd say is I do think we should at least interview the folks who are here tonight, who've taken time out of their evening to be here. And I'm a bit indifferent either way, so if that's what Mr. Castell recommends, that sounds fine to me.
So why don't we interview the folks who are here, and then we'll decide whether we're going to vote tonight. And then if we do decide to vote tonight, we'll make a vote. Is Ann Hoff here this evening? Ms. Hoff, could you please come forward? Thank you for coming in tonight. Yes, please. Could you tell us a little about yourself and what you hope to bring to Discover Newport?
Yes. So I work peripherally with Discover Newport through my role at BRMTA, the Rhode Island Marine Trades Association. Our missions are very similar. We promote the state as a destination, both nationally and internationally. Mine, my role is more towards the boating industry, and we know that--
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
The boating industry in Rhode Island?
Yes.
We know that the boating industry and water tourism is a large part of what brings people to our state. So my understanding is that they're looking for someone to represent Barrington and the happenings of our town, as well as promote Newport and the nine surrounding areas as a destination. I think it's a good way for me to kind of bring together my personal and professional interests in a unique way.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? So I noticed that you did put, you checked a box that said you would be representing an organization. That's the trade association that you spoke about.
Right.
I guess the concern that I would have is, and I don't know when they might diverge, the interests of the trade association might not be the same as Barrington. The question is, you know, whose interests would come first?
I was told to put that by Evan Smith from Discover Newport because we work hand-in-hand. I would be putting the interests of the town before the association, obviously, in this role.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Is Alisa Iakono-Mears here? Did I say your name correctly?
You didn't, but that's okay. It's Iakono-Mears.
Iakono, okay. Iakono-Mears. Ms. Iakono-Mears, could you tell us a little about yourself and what you hope to bring to--
Alisa Iakono-Mears. I am a longtime resident of Barrington, a native Rhode Islander. We moved our family here in 2005, during which time I did a lot of volunteering in the schools when my kids were younger, and now they're in high school. I work for Rhode Island PBS as the senior events manager. And my role there has allowed me, and over the years in events, has allowed me to work with events in every region of the state. And I felt, I thought this would be a great fit for me to work on behalf of Barrington residents and try and bring to Barrington residents the resources that Discover Newport can offer us in showcasing our town with the help of Discover Newport. So that was where I'm coming from for it. I'd love to help the whole town and see where it goes.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? No questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. So the first question for us is, do we vote tonight, or do we hear another applicant next week? Anyone want to weigh in on that? Jacob?
Yes, I mean, I think we have two qualified applicants who applied on time. I'd be happy with appointing either of them. I also know that Matt Ameral would be a great representative, but there is a deadline, and it was missed. And that's, I would lean toward appointing somebody tonight.
So I guess we could, we could do this by motion. If you want to make a, Carl, if you wanted to make a motion to continue the decision on this to our November meeting, we could do it that way.
I think that when we were to, if we were to make an exception for an individual, it should be something that is, there's a consensus on the council. Vice President Hummer has expressed indifference, and Council Breyer has expressed opposition. I will not be making that motion.
Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion then to appoint our representative, Barrington's representative, to Discover Newport?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve or appoint Ann Hoff as Barrington's representative on the Discover Newport Board with a term to expire August 31st, 2020.
Okay. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you both. And Ms. Iakono-Mears, now that I have pronounced your name correctly the second time, and now that we've seen you, you may be getting calls for other volunteer opportunities.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Next item on our agenda is the Economic Development Commission. We have three vacancies for three full members. And the first interview is Mr. Kukstra, David.
President Carroll, I will need to recuse.
Okay.
As do I.
You got it, by the way.
I think I've said it before, so--
Scared him away.
Members have to recuse if they have a business relationship of any kind with a member, so--
Yeah, that's fine.
Don't take offense.
No.
So could you tell us a little about yourself and what you hope to bring to EDC?
Yeah, so frankly, I've had no experience in working in community like this. I'm very green. I come from Michigan. I am not a Rhode Islander. I'm not a, you know, haven't been here my whole life. In fact, I've been here since January. So my wife and I started a small business in town, and we had a sales goal to hit by June, and we had a goal to hit by December, and we hit December's goal by June, actually. So business has been great. Community loves us. Some of the things we do is like, is working with community, donations and those types of things. What we would like to see in our community where we live is other businesses being able to come and do the same thing we are, both not only for individual families, but for community growth as well. It's kind of what I could see happening. How that goes, I don't know.
Great.
Yep.
Great. Well, thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Yep.
Kevin Manering, please. Mr. Manering. Please tell us a little about yourself and what you can bring to EDC.
Sure. Thank you. My name's Kevin Manering. My wife and I bought a house here in Barrington in August of 2020. We're raising our daughter. I'm a co-owner of a business that helps consumer packaged goods entrepreneurs with both software as a service, as well as hands-on product development, logistics and sourcing. And, you know, we've been able to help a lot of small businesses sort of get up off the ground. I mentor a lot of entrepreneurs nationwide, but this being sort of the place where we're going to raise our family, and we wanted, I wanted to get involved in the community more locally and just sort of really help folks around here that are thinking of starting a business or, you know, developing events that might be able to sort of facilitate entrepreneurship in the area. So that's where I'm coming from.
Great. Any questions? Thank you very much for your willingness to serve.
Of course. Thank you.
Adam Milikowski, please. Thank you for coming in, sir. Please tell us a little about yourself and why you're interested in EDC.
Yeah. I, me and my wife have lived here since 2014. We're currently raising our family here still. She's a part owner in a small business here in town, and I just, I'd like to take a part in, you know, helping the town develop its business opportunities a little bit more and make it a better place, basically.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you for your willingness to serve as well.
Thank you.
Okay. We have three openings, three qualified candidates for three vacancies. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve David Kukstra, Kevin Manering, and Adam Milikowski, and apologies if I mispronounce anyone's name, as full members of the Economic Development Commission with a term to expire. I need to withdraw my motion, Mike. We have two different terms. And I'm not sure I follow. So we have three candidates--
Oh, yes. Okay.
We have three candidates for two terms, so apologies for jumping the gun on that.
No, that's okay. We have, let's see, how many do we have, Mary, that expire in 2022 and how many expire in 2024?
I believe it is, uh, two, um, for October 31st, 2022, and one for January 31st, and One for October 31st, 2022, and two for January 31st.
Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion to appoint a member, a full member with an expiration date of October 31st, 2022?
I will make a motion to appoint David Kukstra to, as a full member to the Economic Development Commission with a term to expire on October 31st, 2022.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And we have two recusals. And now, would you like to make the next motion?
Sure. I'll make the next motion to appoint Kevin Manering and Adam Milikowski as full members of the Economic Development Commission with a term to expire on January 31st, 2024.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. That motion carries two recusals. Okay. Thank you all so much for volunteering. We really appreciate it. And you will get an email with the next date. And we'll give our colleagues a moment to get back up here for our next item on the So the next item on the agenda is Senior Services Advisory Board. We have two vacancies, one for a full member and one for a second alternate. We don't have any interviewees tonight, but we've already interviewed Virginia Mead at our last meeting. Since then, we haven't had any additional applicants. So if we're all comfortable with Ms. Mead's interview, does anyone want to make a motion?
I would move to appoint Virginia Mead to the Senior Services Advisory Board.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. If she didn't want to be appointed, she should have showed up, so she gets appointed--
She's right there.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is public comment. This is a three-minute statement, an opportunity for the public to speak regarding a topic that is not already on the agenda. If you would like to speak, please say so by raising your hand, and when you're recognized, state your name and residency for the record. And Mary's also put a sheet up there, if you could fill that out with your name. Would anyone like to be heard for public comment? Yes, sir. Please. Yes, please. Right here.
My name is Peter Breen. I live at 150 Promenade Street here in Barrington. I'm here tonight for twofold. One, I'd like to, well, three perhaps. I'd like to thank the many members of this council for their letters and emails of sympathy and support for the difficulties that my family has endured, lo this last nine months. I'd also like to express my gratitude and support for the efforts of this council to make Barrington a more welcoming place for families of diversity. I've had the opportunity to watch the council do its business a few times now through the Zooms, and I'm grateful, and I've always noticed the civility and professionalism with which all residents are treated, regardless of their point of view on any issue. As a lifelong resident of Rhode Island, when my family got a little larger and my house at the time seemed a little smaller, my dear departed father said to me, "Move to Barrington." I thought that was aspirational. I am a man of humility and gratitude, and I am extremely grateful to have been able to bring my family here to Barrington. I considered it, in many ways, mission accomplished. My children would go to good schools. My wife would live in a nice house. Things would go well for us, and for many, many years, they did. Recently, I contracted COVID-19. My son as well. Very difficult. As you may know, I have a petition pending before the zoning board of review. The zoning board meeting last Thursday was two days after I was tested positive for COVID. My attorney, who I have retained to assist me in my petition, notified the zoning board that I had tested positive. He informed them my wife would come in my stead. The same state regulations, which allow my 13-year-old daughter to continue to attend public school because she is vaccinated, but prevent my 10-year-old son because he is not, I believed were in effect for that meeting. And my wife, who is vaccinated, summed up her courage to attend the meeting in my place in case testimony was asked. Unfortunately, the zoning board apparently objected to her presence at the meeting. She was not asked to produce her vaccination card to show that she was in compliance with the state regulations. Nobody suggested perhaps things be continued because they felt uncomfortable perhaps with state regulations. Again, I understand two days is not a long time to think about these things. Instead, unfortunately, I'm very, very sad to say, to be here tonight to say, I believe she was treated very poorly. She came home in tears, devastated. She said, and I quote, "I saw not one ounce of human compassion in the eyes of any of those gentlemen." She was, in fact, asked to leave, to get up and walk out in front of all the residents who were in attendance that night. It was, in effect, a walk of shame. And it had, I hope, the unintended consequences of exposing her to yet more ridicule and harassment from the very person that I built my fence that is not in compliance to protect her from. I was deep, I am deeply disappointed that this is the way that a resident was treated by a board here in Barrington, Rhode Island, a place which all my life I thought of as the pinnacle of what's good in this state. It was shocking to me that no one, at that time, perhaps raised their hand to stop what apparently was some really brutal rhetoric that was hurled towards both my wife and my attorney, who also was asked to leave said meeting. And again, I'd like to state, I believe my wife was not in violation of the state regulations, the same regulations which allow my 13-year-old to go to school. So I have to ask, why did this happen? You know, the words of sympathy and support are very, very much appreciated. I think the fact that the item next on your agenda after the public comment is an indication that perhaps many people feel that the remedies that theoretically could be applied to mitigate a situation such as my family is going through are wanting. And again, I'm grateful beyond words for the civilized, professional practice, demeanor, behaviors of this council, of the Barrington Police Department, but I was really disappointed at the way that we were treated by the zoning board last Thursday night. Though I was not there, I had my wife, who was devastated, and also the events of the evening were recounted to me from, by my attorney. It is my understanding that this board plays a role of oversight over the board, and I'm simply here tonight to express my disappointment with how we were handled last Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Breen. Thank you, Mr. Breen. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? Please come forward.
I don't have a pen to write on that, but. My name's Catherine Quinn. I live at 23 Brown Ave. And I wanted to thank Mr. Breen for speaking out. And I felt obligated to step up and verify the information that he provided. I was at the zoning board meeting to support Candace, his wife. It was a very, very uncomfortable situation for her to be here in. And I was with her and witnessed her lawyer and herself being shamed and chided and reprimanded for having even come into this room as if they were not even worthy of any kind of human dignity. Really, it was, it was shocking. We left, when we went outside, the other resident who was involved in the hearing mocked us as she drove by. And subsequently, this weekend, we had another incident on Promenade Street where that same resident verbally and physically aggressively approached some of the residents on the street who were simply talking about some of the incidences that have been going on amongst themselves, on their own property, on the street, away from that resident. The police came, and their main concern was to keep the residents who were discussing these issues contained. They were trying to protect the other resident and keep us all from disrupting the peace. I was, I was told that I was violating, I was in a public violation of disrupting the peace, even though I was the one that was getting screamed at, and which I have on video. The police were called by a neighbor to help me because I was being assaulted by this person. And when the police came, they threatened to arrest me for trespassing on the Breen's property when I was a guest at their house with my car parked in the yard. So I want to just encourage you to, I was going to encourage you to, you know, take some time and energy to look at what's going on on Promenade Street. But also at the way that the police responded, it was not acceptable. There, there was no police brutality, and I'm very grateful that I don't have to worry about getting thrown to the ground by the police. But the focus of their energy and the containment that they were involved in was absolutely inappropriate. They were on the wrong side of history. And, and currently, Barrington's zoning board, Barrington's town council, you know, I think the town council has done a lot, a lot of things that look good, creating a DEI committee, putting up a sign that says Barrington is for everyone. And the town manager flew a Black Lives Matter flag very controversially over our town hall. And there's been a lot of outrage about that. But I want to ask that if Black Lives Matter and Barrington is for everyone, why isn't anyone helping this family, which actually has three black residents in it? There is not one person of color in this room, as far as I could tell. Our town is 93% white. I am also white. I'm not shaming anybody here. I'm not ashamed or, you know, angry that, that you aren't, you know, a person of color on the, on the town council. But it's our job to amplify the voices of the people who are underrepresented in our town and less, less presence, less of a presence in positions of power. So I, I want to ask you to do something for this family. I also will say that I returned to that zoning board meeting once I had the Rhode Island Health Department's regulations about quarantining and COVID because I wasn't aware that they were violating the Open Meetings Act by kicking Candace and her lawyer out at the time. And I was only concerned about supporting her. So I came back and tried to make a public comment to them, sharing with them directly off of my, my phone what information I had just become aware of because I was really glad to have it. I thought they'd be interested. And the disdain, anger, and aggressive response that I received from the vice president or vice chair of the zoning board was appalling. He threw his papers down, yelled at me, and threatened to leave the meeting, which, you know, I didn't have a problem with him threatening to leave the meeting. But throwing your papers down and, and scolding someone for coming in and bringing important information is undignified and unbecoming of our board members. So please do something to help the Breen family and show us that Barrington is for everyone and that Black Lives Do Matter.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard for public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to our next agenda item. We're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is to discuss an act on a anti-harassment legislation resolution. This is a matter that Counselor Conway and I have worked on. It's an issue for some folks in Barrington who are subjected to harassment which does not rise to the level of threats. And so the question is whether there ought to be anything in the Rhode Island laws to address this. It's, it's our position that there ought to be, and there is not. So based on that, we look to our neighbor in Massachusetts who has a very similar statute. This, the, the existing laws, Mass. General Laws, Chapter 265, Section 43A, criminal harassment punishment. And based on that, we have drafted a proposed amendment to add the criminal offense of harassment to Rhode Island's general laws. This isn't something we did lightly. We're aware of the concerns about First Amendment rights. We don't want someone saying that they're being harassed while someone else is merely exercising their First Amendment rights, which is why we decided to focus very closely on the Massachusetts law, which has a ton of case law after it. That is, it's been interpreted for years and found to be constitutional because it provides some objective criteria that will sort of clarify and not make this simply, "I don't like what you're saying, and therefore I'm going to, to try and get you arrested." So we, we've, we're proposing this. This, we don't have the power, obviously, as a town council, to pass a law that would affect the state of Rhode Island. We can't pass criminal laws. That's up to our General Assembly. And we hope that our legislators, and I've already spoken with Senator Koin about this, we hope that our legislators will, will take this up. We hope that our council, our, our colleagues on the council will, will join us in this. And I wanted to first give Counselor Conway an opportunity to comment on it and then kind of open it up for the members of the council.
Thank you, President Carroll. When I think about this, this suggestion, this resolution, it is a common sense resolution in the sense that we have neighbors who have felt targeted, challenged, without any ability to do anything to protect themselves or their family. I think one of the, the keys that we kept asking ourselves was, why can't something be done? And with the law in Massachusetts, it's clear that there is something that can be done. I think it's really important to read specific parts of "willfully and maliciously engaging in a known pattern of conduct or series of acts over a period of time directed at a specific person," which seriously alarms that person and would cause a reasonable person to suffer substantial emotional distress. That, to me, is, this is the right matter of managing through harassment as opposed to having to go to commissions and boards that may frankly just not be prepared to manage, manage the kind of stresses that we're asking or expecting them to. It's not the right place to have a conversation about measurement when you're really talking about someone feeling harassed and targeted and unsafe in their own home. So I think this is a very important piece. I'm, I'm thankful for President Carroll's legal background. But in terms of, of how to protect your family and when you can feel safe in your own home, I think this is a critical component.
Members of the council, Counselor Cassell.
I, I think that anytime you see an harassment, a harassment or any kind of, of ordinance or statute that impinges upon, or infringes in any way upon First Amendment rights, we have to look at it very, very carefully. I think this particular legislation is narrowly drawn to address those concerns. When it talks about willful and malicious, that's an element of intent. When it talks about a pattern of conduct, again, this isn't just a one-off where someone lost their cool once. This is a case where someone feels absolutely persecuted. This is where someone reasonably would feel persecuted because we have a reasonable standard in, in place. I think with, with those protections and given the, the narrowness of the proposed legislation and the fact that it has been tested, as President Carroll stated, in Massachusetts, and it's been vetted by Massachusetts Council, I don't think there's any question that it is constitutional and that it addresses a real need and a need that people in this town have certainly felt. The only technical matter I would note is that I believe that the prefile date for legislation in the state senate is November 20th. So there will be some delay before this can get a number and possibly move forward if others, if people would like to follow the legislation. And it hasn't yet been vetted by Rhode Island Legislation Council, Legislative Council, is, is my understanding.
That's right.
And so when we make a motion, we might want to leave enough flexibility that we're not endorsing the exact language, although I think it's clearly constitutional. It clearly addresses a real need, a very serious need. And, and I, and I will support it.
Any other, Vice President Hahn, please.
Yeah, thank you. And I support it too. The only comments I'll, I'll make, and I don't think it's up to us, as Mr. Cassell just pointed out, Legislative Council will take a look at it, is just to make sure it's consistent with other similar statutes. I did talk to some prosecutors, former prosecutors and defense attorneys about this. They've pointed out there is a cyber stalking and harassment statute in Rhode Island that appears to have a little bit of crossover with this. So it would just make sure that, you know, that it's fleshed out. But I don't think that's anything that we would need to do. I think the state can, can certainly handle that and, and cross-check those types of things.
Yeah, it's along the lines of what I was thinking too.
Yeah. So otherwise, but for, you know, but for those comments, I'd support this.
Counselor Brier.
I'm very glad that we're positioning Barrington to be a better supporter of victims of harassment. I have concerns about the proposed legislation, and I won't, I won't be supporting it, but I do applaud the effort.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public? This isn't a public hearing for this particular, but is there anyone from the public who would want to be heard on this? Okay, seeing none. I, based on the, the comments of my colleagues, the resolution as it now stands says, in the "where therefore" clause, "Now therefore be it resolved." "Barrington Town Council hereby petitions the Rhode Island General Assembly to enact the bill attached here too." I would modify that to say, "to enact a bill substantially similar to the bill attached here too during the 2022 session of the General Assembly, creating the criminal offense of harassment." And I, I hope that that would give sufficient flexibility to the, to the Legislative Council and to the General Assembly to address this. So I will make a motion to pass the resolution with that change. And I'll give you this, Mary. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
The motion carries four to one. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is to discuss an act on the Ad hoc Field Committee. Counselor Brier is one of our representatives, our, our only remaining representative to the Ad hoc Field Committee. I believe there's a hearing on the 18th. Is that right?
Yes.
Or a meeting, I should say, but it's a public meeting, I think.
And that should be our, our final meeting. We have, we've had three out of the four sections drafted and ready to go for a while. We were just waiting on that fourth, and we expect that to be ready and available. And we will be reviewing the, the final report, and the committee will be voting to make a recommendation to the council and school committee.
Okay. And to present those reports?
Yes.
Right. Great. So part of the, part of the goal behind this was to, to evaluate, in a more broader sense, our fields and also to evaluate the possibility of a turf field. And so this report will hopefully provide a lot of data for us to chew on and for the school committee to chew on as they consider that as a possibility along with the recommendations of the board. Anything else on that? Okay. Next item on our agenda is to discuss an act on solar fields. I bring this to the council because the Resilience and Energy Committee, focusing on some of the most recent reports and revelations about climate change, have urged us to revisit the idea of solar fields on our capped landfills. And the, the, we have done that in the past. We, I don't remember this council actually getting too far down the road on it, but our, our town planner does have a report on this or from a consultant. It's something I think we ought to consider. And so what I'm asking tonight is that we decide if we have an appetite to consider it. If we do, then I'd recommend that we send this to the Resilience and Energy Committee so that they could present us with proposals. Presumably, this would be with the assistance of the Planning Department and including the proposals that are already, have already been done, or proposal that has already been done and hopefully could be updated based on capping, based on solar panels on top of one of the fields, one of the capped landfills. Is that right, Phil? There's one? Okay, I think they recommended two. So that's, that's the reason I'm bringing this. What is the appetite for this committee to, for this council to explore this idea? Jacob, please.
Yeah, I'm, I'm strongly in support of that. That's, I tried looking into that about a year and a half ago and was told it wasn't something that was feasible. So I'm glad to hear that it's something we can look at. Again, I think it'd be great to, to dive into that because right now it's kind of wasted ground space. Be great to turn that into something productive.
Anyone else?
I, I think it's incumbent upon us to take whatever actions we can to contribute to reducing our carbon footprint. I think we definitely should be considering it as well.
Okay.
I would be in support of it as well.
Okay.
And same, and same here. And I think it's a great idea for Resilience and Energy to take a look at it.
Okay. So I will make a motion to request that the Resilience and Energy Committee review existing proposals and present the town council with proposals for solar fields on proposals and present the town council with proposals for solar fields on one or more of our capped landfills.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Great. Next item on our agenda is to discuss an act on minimum wage, and we have been presented with a spreadsheet on this from our town manager. I just asked our town manager, is it, we don't have any full-time employees that are making less than $15 an hour, is that right?
Correct.
In, in terms of part-time employees, other than seasonal, how many do we have that are making less than $15 an hour?
None.
Okay. So it really comes down to the seasonal employees as to the only folks who work for the town who might be making less than 15.
To qualify, library aides who are children under 16 that don't fall under any minimum wage requirement, they are also not making 15.
Yeah, right. The children under 16 don't fall under standard, under the federal law. In fact, it's children under 18 under the federal law, code of federal regulations. That does not apply to them necessarily either. So the fact that we have already our folks making $15 an hour doesn't mean that we shouldn't kind of pass something, maybe an ordinance, that would sort of set a, set an example, but we also do have to address the, the seasonal in, in either case. Councilor Breyer.
Yes, so my, my hope for tonight's discussion was simply to determine what information we need in order to make an informed decision on this policy. And I think the only thing missing from the spreadsheet is the number of hours of each of those positions that are budgeted for the year so that we can look at what the cost impact would be if we were to say, okay, seasonal employees would also be 15. What does that do to the budget? What does that do if you make the, the floor $15? If there's a second-year lifeguard and a first-year lifeguard, they, they should make different amounts, so that's not 15 for both of them, it's 15 plus something for the second year. So we just need a little bit more information to be able to look at the budget impact.
Right.
I would agree with that sentiment. I think that much more information would get us there. Total cost of the town is important. If there's a bump up necessary, that can be itemized, and we can get a sense for that as well.
We also ought to consider too, I mean, the, the lowest price, the lowest hourly wage here is the canvassers, and I guess they're considered seasonal. These are a few folks who make $11.50 an hour. I think that's, that's right. It's kind of semi-volunteer work, almost like this position, almost like the council.
Yeah, what does the council make an hour? Has anyone figured that out?
Not that much, not, not 15 an hour. So do we, let's start with this. Do we want to say something about the full-time and part-time employees? And, and how should we say that? Do we want to say it as an ordinance, or do we want to say it as a resolution or something? How do we send the message that Barrington is, is setting a $15 an hour minimum wage for its employees?
Well, I, I think we, we need the, the rest of the data before we can determine what it would be that we, we set.
Well, I guess I'm asking how? What, what would be, assuming that everyone agrees that, on, on something, how would we do that? As, as an ordinance, as a resolution?
Why would it not be an ordinance? What would be the, I mean, I'm not, it's not rhetorical.
No. We do have a salary ordinance, so that, that actually describes the, a lot of the full-time positions for the town. So it would be a, a kind of reasonable place to put it. That particular ordinance doesn't address seasonal at all, so we would, if we decide to do that for seasonal, we would need to change that. And, and so what I'm hearing from Councilor Breyer and Councilor Castell is that they would like to get a sense of what the, what the lifeguards, beach attendants, camp counselor, recycling, so on, are doing, beach manager, camp director, in terms of hours per year so that the, whatever the delta is between the 13.50 or 13.75 and the, and the 15 can be addressed. Is that, is that right?
It's right from my perspective.
Yeah.
If I can, Mr. Council President, you know, this year's budget's in the can. The seasonal workers are done for the season. I think this is a great discussion to have with the budget proposal coming forward for next year. That's when we'll have all those figures. We can present, two options, here's option A, here's option B, here's what it's going to cost, the difference it's going to cost you in your next fiscal year's budget. I'm not sure that discussion is going to be of much value at this point, but it'll be of great value as we work into the new budget.
Right, as, but, so I don't think there's an urgency to it because no one will be affected as of, you know, next month or something, but we probably do need to have it in advance of those budget discussions so that we can have a sense of what the impact might be. So maybe if we could have by our December meeting?
Well, as we move into the new budget, we're going to set those hourly rates for those employees. For example, lifeguards this year, we, we had to raise because there weren't enough lifeguards around, and we had to beat the others to the punch. So as we work through the budget, we'll, we'll come up with those numbers, and I think it'd be very easy for us to break out the, the different variables that you would like. I might suggest January is a better option because the budget usually, numbers, the department had stopped working them in December. So to keep it within the budget cycle we currently have, January or February would probably work better as we're preparing the budget. Not wait till we're presenting you the budget, but as we're preparing it, they're going to be doing that, that homework, and they can easily break that out separately.
Right. Does that make sense to everybody?
So a couple months ago, you provided a spreadsheet that included the hourly rates and the hours per year for most of these positions. It just didn't go quite as high on the wage. If we could just have that sheet based on this year's hours, it would let us look at the impact so that we can view the big picture, not, not making a budget decision, but a policy decision. I think it should, it should be in advance of the budget.
I would agree with that. I think it gives us some perspective going in. There's a risk during the budget process, there are so many moving parts at that point, that this can get lost in the shuffle and we end up not, not really deliberating and, and considering our options. There's no harm in, in having the information based upon last year's numbers and then updating that as we go forward, I would think.
Well, that, that is, it's very likely that would provide inaccurate information because we know that there are market pressures pushing this up. What does that mean? We're not going to get lifeguards at 13.50 an hour if we do it next year, just because more and more kids are able to make $15 an hour. So the, you know, as they get closer to the budget time, they're probably going to change that 13.50, so the delta isn't going to be $1.50 an hour. You know what I mean? So, so we could do it based on last year's numbers. It wouldn't be accurate because I'm sure these are going to change with, you know, the, the labor shortages and so on as we try to attract. In fact, these went up from last year, I think, didn't they?
Yes.
So, so there was an increase. I don't know what they're going to be, but, but we can do that. We can, we can do it based on the old data. Oh, sorry.
No, no, sure, no, no worries at all. Is the data going to include not just those employees or seasonal employees who are under $15, but all employees, including their, their supervisors? And I ask that because of the, I think, Mr. Breyer, I think it was you maybe, but somebody mentioned the, the tiered, you know, obviously if, if certain employees are at a certain level, then other employees who rank above them are going to be at a higher level. So I think it would be beneficial to have that full impact of not just, not just those employees who would qualify, but everybody who would be factored into the equation. And I, I, I do want to say, since we are talking about it for discussion purposes, I'm glad to see all non-seasonal, part-time town employees are compensated over $15. I, I would have supported that. Me personally, to be open, I do need to be convinced about seasonal employees to be compensated at $15 an hour or greater. So while we're talking about it, I wanted everyone to at least know where I stood. I'm happy to talk some more, but that's why I'm interested in that data for the, the full paycheck.
What you're asking for is a pretty extensive listing out all the employees, what they make, what their supervisors make. I think some of that gets into management prerogatives as to what I'm paying a supervisor. That being said, you should be well-informed when you make decisions at the lower level. Once again, I would say, going through the science project with last year's numbers are just going to give you last year's numbers. I think there's no rush in getting this done, and doing it as we do the budget makes more sense to me because you're going to have what's really going to impact us in the next fiscal year.
And that, and that, and Mr. Cunha, that's, that's fine with me. I don't mean to intend that, that, that I want to rush the, the process in terms of what you're looking at. I understand the data collection and how extensive it is, and I appreciate in advance, and I'm, I'm certainly not looking for.
And we can, we can start working next year's hourly rates now. There's no reason why we can't do that now ahead of the budget process. I just don't want to work off old data that's going to be irrelevant. Let's do the data, the new data. I just need some time to get it done.
I, I would agree that the more extensive numbers would be, and that's based upon somewhat discretionary decisions. And so, yeah, that, that I would, I would limit that. I would not include that. As far as the, bringing the, the, the seasonals up to 15, we could get a ballpark out of that. I don't know that that would be that, I mean, I, maybe I don't know enough, but I, but I don't know, and I don't know that that would be that extensive of an issue that we could at least have those numbers by December, right?
But what I'm saying is, let me give you, let me give you those numbers for next year. Let, let us work the hourly rates for fiscal year '23 and provide those to you instead of looking at last year's data. I think the more relevant data is next year's data, and we can, we can project what we're going to pay these people hourly rate. There may be some adjustments, but we can project it. So I, I think that's the best way to do it, to give you the data going forward vice what's in the past.
And you're thinking, it would be January for that?
We can, we'll take a look. I'll endeavor to have it for December, if that is the council's pleasure. I, I should say January, but I'll get it for December, only because that'd be someone else's problem in January. No, I, I think with the help of Mary Ann and Kathy, we can, we can put something together. We won't lock it in until the budget, until we make a budget proposal, but we can certainly give you some numbers that'll give you an idea as to what the cost of that might be in the, in next fiscal year.
Right. And, and I would like to thank you. I also, I should say that I join Vice President Humm in saying that I, I do believe in a $15 an hour minimum wage. I'm not sure it should apply to seasonal employees. I, I think there are age distinctions, and even, I think Bernie Sanders paid his campaign workers less than that because they were seasonal employees. I could be wrong about that. I, I read that somewhere, but, but I just want to, you know, sort of set the table on that. That's something that I would like to, you know, I need to be persuaded on as well.
I, I think that, first of all, I wouldn't make blanket assumptions about seasonal workers, one way or the other. And, and I think that it is fair to have the numbers in front of us so we have a sense of the financial impact before we, we go forth with any such change. I think there could be at times a perception of, you know, what a lifeguard is doing. Maybe he's paying for his own college, maybe he's not. Maybe, you know, maybe she really needs that money for some reason, maybe it's, maybe she's just spending on something frivolous. I don't think we can make those judgments and assumptions, and I don't necessarily agree that, that it is just a Sanders proposal. I think it's something that was endorsed by any number of progressive politicians, policy experts, and I wouldn't characterize it as something necessarily of the far economic left of the Democratic Party. I, I think it's, it's definitely a broader concept that I believe was endorsed by more centrist candidates as, as well, and so I was just setting that table.
I agree. In fact, there's a, the best conservative argument I heard from, from no moderate was that the absence of a minimum wage was subsidizing Walmart. Walmart not paying its workers a living wage of $15 an hour meant that its workers were, in addition to receiving their low wages, receiving aid to family with dependent children, and using that government money to buy food at Walmart. And therefore Walmart is getting subsidized by the federal government. And I thought that was, you know, so it's, it's definitely a proposal for a minimum wage that is not limited to, certainly it's, it's obviously a lot more on, on progressives, but it's not limited to progressives.
Yeah, agreed, and I think that for what may be, I anticipate a limited financial impact to the town, we may be able to live the Barrington values that we talk about and that, and that I think animated a, a lot of people who are arguing for more economic justice in, in the country who, who a lot of us respect. Put it that way.
Okay. So January endeavor for December.
December.
Does that make sense? Okay. Great. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is to discuss and act on local taxes, elderly volunteers. This is two, two laws that were recently passed, and these were passed with, and signed by the governor with the support, I think, of Senator Koin and Representative Jason Knight, I think. And Counselor, Vice President Humm wanted to just sort of address this and, and talk about it.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Carroll. A member of the community actually reached out and alerted the council about this, these particular bills, House bill and Senate bill. And, you know, at, at first look, it, it actually looked like a very noble and reasonable bill in terms of what it offers and the tax credits for elderly residents volunteering with the town. And actually, in fact, Senator Koin, I think, sponsored the Senate bill, and Representative Knight, Casser, sponsored the House bill in addition to Ms. Speakman, one of our former, or maybe your former colleague, but former counselor in, in Barrington, which I thought was, was pretty interesting for, for our town here. So I, I asked to put this on the agenda to start kind of exploring, I guess, you know, whether, whether this is something that, that is reasonable to put forth and, and is something that, you know, practically can be enforced and implemented. I've seen Mr. Cunha's comments. I'm actually, I'm interested in, in learning a bit more, and I have some questions on them too, but I wanted to see if maybe you could talk a bit behind the bullets and behind some of the numbers that you have.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Vice President Humm. This, this legislation is a great piece of legislation on the outset. The, the actual making it work becomes very difficult. They enacted it in Massachusetts and had to roll it back to $500 from $1,500. IRS says if you make in more than $500, they become contracted employees and they need to file a 1099. The elderly employees, we'd have to find jobs for the elderly employees, we'd have to have supervision for the elderly employees, we'd pay a minimum wage up to $1,500 in earnings or tax credits. It becomes problematic in, they, they have to file with their 1099, they have to fire a DLT, a workers' compensation waiver form because they're no longer, they're not eligible for workman's compensation. I spoke to Ian Riddlin at the inter-local trust. He's very concerned with this bill because of the legal liabilities that it brings with elderly working in the town. You know, once again, where would, where would we have them work? Where would we employ them safely for someone of that age? And, and how would we supervise and, and track it? It also, if the liability suits that come up. So no other towns have yet enacted this enabling legislation, and my recommendation is that So no other towns have yet enacted this enabling legislation, and my recommendation is that while on the outset it appears to be a good idea, there's a lot of complicating factors that make it a lot more difficult to implement than you might think at first.
So as I understand it, the... These workers would not be covered by workers' comp insurance?
Correct.
So workers that are covered by workers' comp who get injured, we have insurance for that. But if somebody gets injured and they're not covered by workers' comp, then we're on the hook for that. And that could be a lawsuit, and we would have insurance, a different kind of insurance, I hope.
They need to be contracted employees, so... Or, sorry, independent contractors. So therefore, there is no workman's comp coverage for them. In addition, they shouldn't be able to bring suit against us. They can't... I mean, they can bring suit against us, but we shouldn't have to pay because there's no coverage provided. Now, how that suit bears out in court is a different case, as you well know. And the trust, the Interlocal Trust, said they would defend it. It'd be their obligation to defend us in court if these suits were brought against us.
Right.
I just worry about the optic of employing elderly employees at minimum wage to do rudimentary work for... I'm not sure how many takers. I quoted 6 million. You know, the loss of revenue because only one person in a household can actually do this, it would be about the maximum. If everyone in town eligible applied, it would be about 3.5 million in revenue loss. That's not going to happen. We couldn't find enough jobs for them. But my point is that you're putting these people to work at minimum wage to make a tax credit that, you know, we already have a pretty aggressive elderly tax credit without any need for employment. I think we've done our service to the elderly community and taken care of those that need it. I'm not sure this is going to bring anything more to the table.
In terms of the... Some of the issues with respect to liability or workers' comp or the other issues that would come with them being an independent contractor, is there a threshold where an employee would not be considered an independent contractor?
Well, up to $500, they're not an independent contractor. Once they exceed $500, they're an independent contractor. They have to file a 1099, and they have to file the DLT Workman's Comp waiver form. Now, they have to do that. Obviously, we would have to track them to do that, make sure that they do it if they're going to... And I'm not sure how you'd work the tracking of their hours for when they're covered up to 500 and then, you know, bring it over $500 to the, you know, from 500 to 1,500.
And the only reason I ask, and I think you mentioned how Mass had to pull back and lower it to 500. There is a sentence in the bills that says the cities and towns have the power to create local rules and procedures for implementing this section, et cetera, et cetera. So perhaps that's something the town could look into if feasible in terms of if some of the administrative burdens and potential liability burdens apply to independent contractors but not non-independent contractors and non-employees, you know, is that something that might work?
I think another complicating factor is our boards and commissions and our other volunteers. And where does this fit in? Do we end up tracking every board and commission member and their hours? Does that count? It probably should. So once again, the administration, administrative burden of this program would be pretty considerable.
Well, I didn't... And, sorry, go ahead.
Counselor Breyer. So it does sound like there are a lot of administrative challenges to this, and we really don't know how much of an appetite there is in the community to make use of it should we decide to implement a program. I wonder if it's worth asking the Senior Services Advisory Board to explore if there would be an appetite to do it, and then we could evaluate, is it worth trying to resolve the administrative challenges? It might be that it's not of interest to enough people anyway, and so it's not worth pursuing. Or it could be that it would be extremely valuable to the community, and so we take the time to figure it out.
Yeah, please.
Even if you get to that point, you have a lot of legal logistics. I think this is a great idea and concept. When you get into the mechanics of it, there are a lot of pitfalls and a lot of expense and a lot of risk. Now, if those can be mitigated, then it's something we should reconsider, I think. But in addition to what Counselor Breyer mentioned and Vice President Humm, I would just add that we certainly need quite a bit of legal research on this as well to consider the implications. And I frankly would count myself as just, in a practical sense, skeptical as to whether we can get there.
Yeah. And I would hate to... I also am quite skeptical of this. I mean, there are additional issues, like, for example, we have collective bargaining agreements. I don't think... I'm not that versed in them. I don't think that we could, for example, ask our seniors to come in and paint a room because I think the CBA says that's DPW, and you hire them. I'm not sure about that, but I am sure that there are a lot of areas where we could run into problems with our collective bargaining agreements. And I am sure that... I also think this is kind of an inefficient way of doing things. It's minimum wage, state minimum wage. Our seniors could do better than state minimum wage in a lot of different places if they were looking for money to pay for the taxes. If we felt that it was a struggle for them, we could certainly revisit our tax relief that we've just done, and that would be a lot more efficient because I think we... Do we end up hiring people to supervise this program or adding to someone's work for it? And I hate the idea of sort of changing our spirit of volunteerism. We are so lucky to have a ton of seniors in our town who volunteer on our boards and commissions. We've got people who come for that Barrington Day of Caring, volunteer coaches and so on. And I hate the idea of kind of monetizing that. And if that's the case, what do we do with the 55-year-old board member who's sitting next to a 65-year-old board member that's getting paid if we were to do it that way? It's just, there's a lot of things wrong with this. I wouldn't want to encourage someone to think that if you're interested, we'll do this. We may never do this because it could just be too complicated, too expensive. It might just be a lot cheaper to provide additional tax relief on the margins for our seniors if they're struggling, rather than creating a kind of program of, like a Works' Progress Administration for Barrington. So I wouldn't want to encourage folks because I am quite skeptical of this. I would really need to see it done successfully and have somebody explain to me. I can't imagine a job that we couldn't pay somebody... We just got over saying we're going to pay $15 now, which is substantially higher than the state minimum wage, but we can't pay them higher than the state minimum wage for this. Why don't... If we have work that needs to be done and we can hire them, hire them and pay them $15 an hour. So that's why I wouldn't want to get our seniors to think that we are moving forward on it. At least give the caveat, please. Vice President Humm.
Yeah, thank you, and thanks for everybody's comments. I think there have been some very good comments raised. It's not on the agenda with a resolution or proposed ordinance tied to it. What I'd suggest is why don't we table it indefinitely, no specific date, but if more information comes to light that would be helpful to the council's decision, then that's great. We could always take it up again a year from now, two years from now. Or if nothing comes to light, then, you know, maybe it doesn't come up again, but at least give it an opportunity to think about. I don't think it's on to outright, you know, reject or be opposed to, but, you know, just table it and see what happens.
Okay.
And tabling it is often interpreted as, oh, well, nothing will happen. However, it's possible that another town will attempt to do this, and then you'll have some kind of a model mechanically of how things would happen. But, yeah, I would echo the comments of President Carroll on this issue. And, yeah, something may well come to light on this, but at this point, I don't think we can move.
Yes, please.
And I would love to hear what the Senior Services Advisory Board considers or thinks about it, just to have some sort of frame of reference from a commission.
Who's the liaison? Are you the liaison? I would just ask, I mean, you're hearing a lot of skepticism, so set expectations. This isn't something we're ready to rush into, even if they loved it, because we just haven't seen a good model.
Yeah, I think I'll have a conversation with the chair, share with her what this discussion was about, and see if she thinks it's worth bringing to the board.
Okay. Anything else on this? Okay. Next on our agenda is to discuss and act on the street parking update, and our town manager, Jim Cunha, and our police department have been out measuring roads and doing different kinds of analyses. And if you could just kind of take us through what you've found.
Sure. Thank you, Counselor President. In back of you are color-coded maps. I did my coloring project of streets that are over 26 and under 26 and that we can refer to if necessary. What I discovered is that there are a number of streets in town that are over 26 feet wide. Now, that's the objective standard that I've applied, 26 feet. If it's over 26 feet, then a fire engine can get through, and you can have a car parked on one side, and it's not an issue. It meets the 20-foot NFPA standard. If it's 32 feet, you could have parking on both sides of the street. So that's the objective. And I listed those streets out that currently prohibit parking in paragraph three of my memo, that prohibit parking based on... That can allow parking based on their width. Those streets can all have parking on one side based on their width. Then I applied my subjective criteria to it. What is my subjective criteria? Well, the objective was the emergency vehicle access. The subjective criteria is the two-way traffic, turning requirements, business and residential needs, school zones, safety concerns, traffic speed concerns. And I think the thing that's probably most significantly important is residential quality of life. People pay taxes to live on a street. Doesn't mean we should prohibit parking, but it impacts their quality of life, especially if they're in certain locations, such as by Barrington Beach. We know from experience that when that parking lot fills up or when people from out of town can't get into the parking lot, they park up and down the streets around Barrington Beach. They block access to vehicles. They block driveways. It's a problem. So opening up those streets for parking is problematic. The other issue is the points of access. There are a lot of points of access that we designated with granite monuments several years ago. It preserves them in perpetuity, hopefully, and it allows people to access the water and the beach from those points. Most of those points of access are at the end of narrow, tiny, little residential roads that are not 26 feet wide. So to open up that for parking is problematic, both on an objective and a subjective. So in paragraph four of my memo, what I've done is, and once again, this is Jim Cunha's view of the world, but what I've done is I've looked at that list of streets that should... That could allow parking because they're wider than 26 feet and provided you with a list of streets that I think you should consider to open up to parking on one side. Those are streets that it doesn't impact any of those subjective criteria that I presented to you a few minutes ago.
So this actually started as a project some time ago with just examining the parking and no parking. And then it was a concern, sent in an email to me by Mr. Block. So he's raised it more specifically about the parking availability near rights of way. If Mr. Block wanted to be heard on this, be welcome. Good evening. Thank you for coming in.
No problem. Thank you.
So you've expressed an interest in parking availability, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, so just, I just want to frame this, and you go where you need to with it, but in parking availability near rights of way. And if you could kind of just articulate your point and what you'd hope to get from the council.
Sure, absolutely. I think this might be the first time I've testified to the Barrington Town Council. So, thank you. You broke my cherry tonight. Effectively, Barrington has no parking policies in place that prohibits parking within a mile of most, if not all, of our public rights away that weren't... That aren't actually town beach off the parking lot. And that is a real problem for the vast majority of the residents of this town because they don't have access to get to... They can't get to these public rights away. Even though these are public rights away available for the public to use, they cannot be used by the public. Because who can haul their stuff a mile or more, in my case, it's two miles, to get to a public right of way to access the beach? Barrington's slogan is "Barrington is for All." I would amend that to include, but not our public rights away. So what I'm not proposing and asking you to do is to allow 600 cars to flood the neighborhood. That's silly and destructive and doesn't make any sense. But it does make sense to allocate a small number of parking spots, half a dozen, a dozen, scatter them around the neighborhoods, to allow people to enjoy access to the beach who don't have the privilege of actually living on the beach. So, and I think that you'll find, as you talk to other members of the community who aren't lucky enough to live in that neighborhood, that they would absolutely love to use those public rights away, and most of them aren't even aware that they can't get at them. So, you know, that's one thing. The second thing is, effectively, the police department is being used to enforce a neighbor-only parking situation. So what happens is, the streets are defined as no parking, but enforcement only happens when someone calls in a complaint. So on graduation week, on the Fourth of July, the streets in that neighborhood are crowded with cars, people visiting, people who live in that area, enjoying everything that it is to be there. No one calls the police for enforcement. Pick any other weekend when someone like me or anyone who lives around Primrose or anywhere else wants to park on those streets to access one of those public rights away, and someone in that neighborhood calls in a complaint, they end up with a ticket. So there shouldn't be, effectively, two classes of citizens. A class who lives in the neighborhood, can park on the streets, can actually call the police department and request an exemption from a parking ban because they're throwing a party, right? What are the town's policies, and why are we not enforcing the same policy for everybody? If a neighbor can call and request an exemption to the parking ban because they're throwing a party, can I call the police and say, I'm going to go park over on Watson, please exempt me from a ticket? Right? You can't do this. You can't have two parallel policies. Basically, it's unfair, and I'm also, you know, I'm not a legal expert, but it doesn't feel right. It doesn't feel like that is a formal town policy that passes legal muster. I have questions also about the assessment that was done on the streets. One of my businesses, we sell traffic signals that sit at the intersections of public roads and public rights away, bike paths, greenways, that sort of thing. I work with traffic engineers all the time. We deal with parking issues all the time. Parking is not determined, whether a street is suitable for parking or not, isn't determined based on a number... I don't want to say it's picked out of thin air. That's not fair. But it's a very arbitrary number that you use, 26 feet. The real assessment for whether a street is suitable for parking or not involves the volume of traffic. It involves the speed of the vehicles through there. And you find in a great many places, parking is allowed on streets far narrower than 26 feet wide. Beacon Hill doesn't burn down. Those streets are pretty narrow, and they allow parking on some of them. So my point is, is that we should figure out a way, and by we, I mean we collectively, should figure out a way how to provide a a way how to provide a reasonable number of parking spots, so that a reasonable number, by the way, those beaches also aren't large, right? At high tide, they more or less disappear. So, you know, we're never going to see hundreds of people over there, but we should figure out a way, at a bare minimum, at least for other Barrington residents, on how they can also enjoy those public rights away. I would ask you to take another look at Central Avenue over in Alfred Drown. I measured that street at 30 feet. It's right near the public right of way on the Conserved Beach, and that wasn't on the list. So, you know, that was a pretty wide, that was a pretty wide street, and that would be a prime candidate to allow some parking. And just one last thought I want to leave you with. You're talking about converting capped fields to solar farms, okay? I live, by the way, I live on Atlanta Crossing. I should have done that first thing. I don't abut a capped landfill, but I drive past it every day. In fact, personally, I support the idea of putting solar panels on there. But I can guarantee you that abutting neighbors are going to go bonkers if you want to cover that field with solar panels. So my question to you is, you have a small number of Barrington residents near the beach, who are very upset and acting in a way to prevent other Barrington residents from using a public asset that's right there. Will you provide that same consideration to the abutting neighbors of these capped fields, who are going to be very upset about the idea that their visual field of view and all manner of other things are going to be covered over by glass and metal, right? So, you know, it's, we're very privileged to live where we live. We have tremendous assets here. I don't understand how it is that we don't share them, right? And we don't have to do this in a way that's disruptive. Make sure that the parking expires before the sun goes down. If you have to, restrict the parking to Barrington residents. If you have to, make the residents who park there have a beach sticker, right? I mean, there's all manner of compromises that can be made to allow people access to these rights away, where they only have to walk a block or two. I think that's the right thing for us to do. I know that I would absolutely use that if I could. I know there are others who would as well. And I think there's a great many other people in this town who would just be stunned to learn that this situation even exists right now. So anyway, that's where I'm at. That's what I think is really important here. I don't see this as a difficult problem to solve. I think there's a lot of different ways to do it. A blanket prohibition on parking, though, is not one of them.
So just to be clear, though, you can park at Barrington Beach, so you're not, are you talking about the rights of way around there?
Correct. I'm not talking about the public parking at the Town Beach. I'm talking about the rights of way at the end of Clark, the rights of way at the end of Watson. Now, I'm not suggesting that parking on Watson or Payne is appropriate. It's not. But when you move up Clark a bit, and when you get over to even Adelaide, for example, you know, there is absolutely an ability to have a car parked and have plenty of room for the biggest truck you can imagine to get by. So, you know, Governor Bradford, for the life of me, I can't understand how it is that we wouldn't allow parking on Governor Bradford. That's an extraordinarily wide road. My sense is, you could put three or four fire trucks side by side and drive down that road. So, and I understand, it's not necessarily a question of safety at this point. It's whatever the other mitigations were, which I'm guessing is neighbors being upset that people are going to be parking in front of their streets. What if the same thing happened with abutting neighbors of Chinese Field? What if they decided one day, they didn't like the disruption on their Saturdays from all the soccer players coming over? What do we do? I mean, and those people bought their houses knowing that was a soccer field. It's not reasonable for them to say, "Don't come here. We're coming to the council and asking for relief, because we can't have this disruption anymore." Everybody who owns a house in the neighborhood bought a house near something called a public right of way. It's unreasonable for the neighbors there. And by the way, it's not all neighbors. I know, I've heard from a lot of folks in that neighborhood who are supportive of allowing parking. But it's not reasonable for somebody who lives there to suggest or demand that other Barrington taxpayers, whose tax dollars help to acquire and maintain those public rights away, are effectively prohibited from using those public rights away.
So I guess I'm struggling to understand, you know, when you start talking about other parts of town.
Yeah.
Okay, that's one thing. But if you can park at Barrington Beach, I think Adelaide is certainly within, I mean, you're on the same beach if you park at Barrington Beach. There's public parking there. So what is, it's that particular spot?
So, no, it's that spot. It's the, I'm sorry, I can't remember, I can't remember the name of the Conserved Beach at the end of Appian Way, but it's, you know, pick whatever it is. There's right of way at the end of Anawumskut, right? And then there's the new right of way that was developed, that was at the end of Willow, where, you know, we dredged out the inlet and everything. There's no parking anywhere near any of those places. So, you know, I'm using the beach as an example, but Barrington prohibits parking pretty much near all of the other public rights away.
Well, see, I mean, that's a little unfair, isn't it? Because you're talking about Barrington Beach, where we have a ton of parking. It opens at five o'clock in the morning?
Yes.
Five o'clock in the morning. If somebody wants to go to the beach, so, we're not prohibiting it near the rights of way. In fact, that's the best parking place, because you're right there. If you parked, if there was parking at some of those rights of way, you'd have to climb over some rocks and things like that. We didn't design those rights of way as access to the beach. We designed the beach as the best place to park. That's right there. So to say that we do it, all of those ones that are close to the beach that lead to Barrington Beach, you can park right at Barrington Beach.
So, for example, so the Barrington Beach can be crowded. The Barrington Beach is not necessarily uncrowded at times. To be able to move down the beach and find, be able to spread out is nice. And if you're able to park at those public rights away, you can get there without slogging across, you know, a whole bunch of sand and stepping all over people and everything else. I'm just giving you one, for example.
So it's a matter of convenience in that case.
Well, it's more than a matter of convenience. That's, the purpose of these public rights away is to allow the public to get at them, right?
I agree.
Okay.
But the purpose is not to allow people to park on them. The purpose was...
No, 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 not to park on them, but you'd want to be able to park somewhere close to them.
And you can park very close to the same, access the same body of water at Barrington Beach.
No, you missed my point.
I guess what I'm saying is, you've sort of made a blanket statement that it's, our rights of way are, on average, a mile away, I think you said.
They are.
That's clearly not the case.
Clearly is. So, for example...
Barrington Beach is less than, what, 50 yards from the water. It's right on the beach, and that is a massive place to park.
Yes, but it is not the beach that's at the end of Watson. And what I'm, what I'm saying to you is...
And I'd be surprised if Watson was a mile away from Barrington Beach.
So if you, so to drive from Watson to the Barrington Beach parking lot is just a touch, just a touch under a mile.
Okay, so...
Right? So, and to drive from Watson to NAYET School is over two miles. To drive from Watson...
That can't be the case.
I think so. I had to go back and check. To drive from Watson to the only other parking that I could find that was legal at the time, which was Legion Way, or Barrington Beach, Legion Way was one and a quarter miles. So, you know, but that's literally how far you'd have to look. I mean, I don't think many Barrington residents are going to look at this and be like, "How does it make any sense that there's a public right of way and a town-enforced parking ban that makes it impossible for members of the town who don't live in that neighborhood to use those public rights away?" It's not, it's not, it's not an outrageous ask.
It clearly doesn't make it impossible. It makes it inconvenient for some people. So I've ridden my bike to Barrington Beach. I could ride my bike to the...
You can ride your bike to Barrington Beach with a cooler on your shoulders?
No, but if I wanted to bring a cooler to Barrington Beach, I'd probably drive.
What if you didn't want to be on the Barrington Beach, but you wanted to be on the beach to the north of Watson?
Well, if you, if you want to walk down there, you certainly can. Go to the beach, park there, lots of parking, and then walk. I find it hard to believe that the edge of the parking lot from there is a mile away from the Watson right of way.
As you drive it, it is. I obviously couldn't bring my vehicle down to the beach and do it.
Well, you could bring your vehicle down to Barrington Beach. You could park on the far side of the lot, and I'm going to bet you're less than half a mile from the edge of Watson.
I couldn't tell you one way or the other, because I, I have a pretty good pace, you know. I can, I can, I can walk off 30 feet pretty regularly and know it. I didn't bother trying to tick off how far it was from the parking lot to there. I'm not sure that it should matter, because ultimately, my tax dollars paid to acquire those public rights away, my tax dollars, sure they were, along with everybody else's.
Nope.
And then to maintain those public rights away, the granite markers...
Unless you've been here for hundreds of years. You know, our tax dollars didn't do that. Our tax dollars did pay to put the granite markers there.
Sure.
Which was, by the way, a great thing that our town manager did, and a great thing that our harbor commission did, because we wanted everyone in town to know where those rights of way were. Lots of them were kind of disappearing over time. As people, as things overgrew, and unfortunately, as some neighbors tended to use it as if it was their own property, and maybe even put shrubs up. So, so those were great. But the rights of way themselves were there, have been there for a long time. We didn't, we didn't acquire them recently.
When the time comes to pave those roads, is it appropriate and fair that myself as a taxpayer, helping to fund paved roads that I can't use for the purposes of accessing the public rights away? I'm just painting you scenarios where what we're looking at here is very unfair to the vast majority of the people who live here. And again, forget Barrington Beach. Talk to me about Alfred Drown, right? We have the same exact problems there. The same near blanket prohibition on parking exists there, that exists in the NAYET neighborhoods around the public rights away at the end of Clark and at the end of Payne. So when you look at, in totality, at Barrington's public rights away, you'll see, and if you mark off all the streets, there are no parking, you can't get near, you can't get near a reasonable walking distance to the vast majority of the public rights away. I don't think that's an acceptable scenario for us to be in. I really don't. It's kind of shocking. I lived for over a decade in Bay Spring. I lived right at the end of Blanding Avenue. It never once occurred to me, I was right on the water, it never occurred to me, to prohibit, to think about asking to prohibit people from being able to come down and enjoy the shore. Never occurred to me.
And you're saying that people are prohibited from doing that?
I'm saying, when I was a resident on Blanding Avenue, it never occurred to me to ask, to have people be prevented from you being accessed to the shore. We now have scenarios where we have entire neighborhoods where other residents of the town can't get at the public rights away to get to the shore.
Just one last thing. I, I'm familiar with that area in Bay Spring, and you can really park right at Atria.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying Bay Spring has a problem. I'm just saying...
That's just a couple of blocks from...
Right. I'm just saying, it never occurred to me, as a resident of that shoreline community, to ask to keep other people out.
And I don't think anybody's asking to keep people out.
People are kept out, because you can't park. Not in Bay Spring. I'm talking about in all the other areas.
Okay, so there are certain ones that you're talking about, not all of them?
I'm absolutely wrapping into these, the rights of way, the public rights of way at Payne and at Clark as well. I really do not think, and by the way, and I'm not talking about Bluff, because Bluff is right on top of Barrington Beach. And there's also, you know, I cede the fact that there are some, you know, serious parking challenges near there, except for Governor Bradford, right? But, you know, it's, it's not difficult to envision carving out a half dozen parking spots in front of shrubbery that no one's going to see, where you can provide a small number of parking spots for a small number of people to be able to walk down and use those public rights away.
Okay.
Thank you, President Carroll. Mr. Block, nice to meet you in person. We've had a lot of communications that have not been in person, and it's lovely to meet you in person. I want to just really get back to something that you said, the objective standard of measurement, and to make sure that we are all in agreement and understanding where that measurement comes from. My concern is when we start debating facts, that we are getting ourselves into very dangerous territory, where we're saying, "Well, Beacon Hill hasn't burned down," or "Certain things haven't happened." The qualification of having the fire chief have a suggested width for emergency vehicles, in my mind, precludes anybody's ability to park a car in front of those properties. I agree with Mr. Carroll in the sense of nobody has restricted anybody's access to the beach. In fact, and I know many of you know I live on Bluff, one of the things that attracted me to that house was the fact that there was a public right of way at the end of my street, that I would be able to walk across a piece of grass and get to the beach. I did not expect to park in front of it. I just knew that in many communities, the seashore is restricted, so much so, that my neighbors would have built shrubs or would have put something there. And that is actually limiting access. So I'd like the town manager to speak a little bit about the objective standard of measurement.
Can I, can I refer to the fire chiefs on CSAR?
Absolutely.
Expert?
When the town manager asked me what the standards were for streets and so forth, I simply referred to the NFPA standard, which, it's NFPA 1, Chapter 18. Anybody can look it up. There's free access to see those things. And the standard was for a 20-foot street. I just required a development off of Rumstick, where they're putting two dwellings down the same driveway, and I made them put a 20-foot wide driveway in. Now, the 20 feet is not just for a truck to simply drive through. The 20-foot standard was based on firefighting ability also, to stop there, to set up that equipment, to lay hose lines, to have other vehicles possibly pass by. In other words, once, once an emergency occurs, we stop everything, and it becomes a fire ground. And that fire ground needs to be at least 20 feet in width for us to work on that fire. Now, there are certainly many places where there are no dwellings around, and the most we would have would be a brush fire and so forth. That's not what I was being involved in. I was talking about the standard as it's referenced. There are a number of exceptions in that standard, like if those people down on Rumstick could not have put that 20-foot in, they could do other things like put sprinklers in their home, which have come down considerably in cost. So it's not like you're asking to put thousands and thousands. But, so you would have to look at that standard. And like I had mentioned to Mr. Cunha, that a street that's there and allows parking today or does not allow parking, it's existing. So the code wouldn't have covered that. But once you start to tinker with the street, either by allowing parking or taking it away, then it would, as I saw it, would become part of the standard. So that's where that 20-foot came from.
Can I just ask you a quick question, Chief? NFPA is a, that's guidance on a number of things, right? That covers everything from turnout gear and things like that, doesn't it?
There's hundreds of standards, and we follow, the state, we always refer to Rhode Island as an NFPA state. So, and we follow those, and it's referenced in our Rhode Island State Fire Safety Code. All those standards are referenced individually. So when you need something, you can certainly go back to that reference to find it.
Right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Sure.
So if I, if I understand the executive summary that I read on the parking, the vast majority of Barrington streets are narrower than 26 feet, correct?
Correct.
Are we banning parking on all those streets?
No.
Well, we're going to ban parking near the beach?
I reviewed the no parking ordinance and reviewed the streets where parking was prohibited, and I produced a list where I believe we can allow parking. That's what that summary did.
Well, I'm just trying to understand, if it's unsafe to park on a street that's narrower than 26 feet in the NAYET neighborhood, why would it therefore be safe to park on the street in Atlanta Crossing, where the street is 23 feet wide? the street in Atlantic Crossing where the street is 23 feet wide?
If you, are you asking if, that we reduce the parking so on Atlantic Crossing?
I'm just trying to understand the logic behind what we're talking about here.
I can do that. I can help you with that. I can help you with that because, if you, just give me a minute. We're doing this based on the NFPA standards. That has been our guiding principle in this stage of it. We weren't around when the parking, no parking, was put in. And in fact, I've probably done about three in my career, I can only remember one right now, one no parking place in town where we had to pass an ordinance for parking right near the middle school because somebody got blocked in their driveway while people were waiting for their kids. But that, if we were to do it again, if we were to look at the size of streets and decide whether it ought to be parking, I think we would use the NFPA as the primary guidance. So I can't tell you the streets that are pre-existing non-conforming, whether they ought not to have parking. If somebody tells me that there are streets that are unsafe and ought not to have parking, I'm quite open to restricting them.
So has somebody told you that every single street in the Neat neighborhood is unsafe for parking?
Are you saying?
So every street narrower than 26 feet? I'm trying to understand how you can determine that the streets in the Neat neighborhood that are narrower than 26 feet are dangerous if someone parks there, but the same street in a different neighborhood somewhere else is not deemed dangerous? I can't put my head logically around that.
So if you're petitioning us, if you'd like to say, I don't know if Atlantic Crossing is 23 feet all the way down. It's a newer road, so I'd be surprised if it wasn't 26 feet, but if it is, we certainly could consider that because we want our streets to be safe.
Right. So I'm pointing out the logical inconsistency of the fact that the vast majority of the town's streets are, per Town Manager Cunha's description, narrow, and per Councilwoman Conway's description, therefore highly unsafe.
I don't think that's what she said. I think what she said was that we ought to follow the NFPA guidelines.
Has a traffic engineer, have you asked a traffic, have you asked an expert?
Yes.
Traffic engineer?
Yes, we've asked an expert. Our fire chief.
So, no, 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 no. The fire chief, with all due respect to the fire chief, he's not a traffic engineer.
You're right. You're right, he's not. But we're going to go with safety over convenience, in my opinion. Now, I could be wrong about it, but we're always going to have safety beat convenience.
But the vast majority of towns would be talking to a traffic engineer to help guide them in making these decisions. Because, as I said before, and I work with traffic engineers all the time, more goes into this than simply taking a tape measure and measuring the width of the street. It just does.
You're absolutely right, and I think that if it was wide enough, if it was 26 feet by itself, that wouldn't be enough. Because you're right, if you had a lot of traffic going back and forth, that might not be safe. And those are things that we ought to take into account. But I think.
But, and then just a final thought, and I've been, thank you for all the time, I really appreciate it. You'll find, when you talk to traffic engineers who do this, that you can safely park cars on streets with very low volumes of traffic and very low rates of speed that are narrower than 26 feet. And that's just a fact in the traffic world, so, you know, I just wanted to put that out there to you as well. Hopefully, one way or the other, we can all figure out a way to, even in a little tiny way, open up some access to our public rights aways, all of them. We should all have the ability to somehow get access to any public right of way, because if we can't, it's not public.
It's not.
It's not public. Thank you.
President Carroll, may I ask another question of Manager Cunha? I'm just looking at, so, as I understood it, the roads across town were reviewed. These are roads that were specifically, had prohibited, they were not, apologies for the double negative, but they were, parking was not allowed on the streets, and now we are removing them from the prohibited parking to allow for parking to occur on these.
Paragraph 3 lists all the streets that are over 26 feet wide that currently have no parking.
Yeah.
Paragraph 4, after applying the subjective criteria that I talked about, is my recommendation for streets that currently have no parking, that you could allow parking on without impacting, significantly impacting the quality of life, safety, that type of thing.
And these are streets throughout town, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, they are not just limited to points of access for the beach.
That's, I didn't even look at points of access.
Yes. No, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, because I know Middle, Lincoln, a number of the streets are not necessarily beach access. Thank you.
Okay. Members of the council, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thoughts? Yes, Counsel Breyer.
So I agree with setting an objective safety standard, and the fire chief's recommendation for that certainly makes sense. What I'd like more information on is kind of the subjective criteria that was used and how it's determined that the subjective criteria should retain the prohibition on parking on certain streets and not others. I'd just like to have more documented information about why certain recommendations are and are not made. And then additionally, I'm curious, and Mr. Black referred to this also, if we are setting a safety standard as a threshold, and we have many streets in town that are below that safety standard, are we now recognizing that we have many unsafe streets throughout town and not doing anything about it? That's a reason why I think it would be worth consultation with a traffic engineer to really look at what our objective and subjective criteria should be before moving forward to make a decision.
Okay. Anyone else on the council? Counsel Castell.
I feel the need to address what I think has been an unfair attack on the town's The fact is that, I mean, I've been to the beach any number of times, certainly in the triple figures. I've never had a problem parking at the beach. You can always park at the beach. If you are a resident, you can park at the beach. So when we see public statements indicating that somehow no one can park there, and oh, you can't use the public access to the beaches in the rights of way, bottom line is, if you have a car, you can park at the beach. And if, in the rights of way, supplement that so that people can walk through those rights of way. Under the logic that I'm hearing here is the idea that if we have a hiking trail, well, someone benefits by living near that trail, and therefore we have to create parking around the trail. Other people live near Hundred Acre Cove, and their taxes are reflective of that. They can maybe walk to Hundred Acre Cove, or they can walk to the Village Center. I think when we start pitting neighborhoods against each other like that, and we start assuming, well, my taxes pay for this and your taxes pay for that, you might want to remember that your taxes in part are based upon the value of your home, which in part depends upon what you're near. So people, in fact, are paying for the proximity to whatever benefit, whether it's a park or a beach or any other public amenity that they live near. And I don't think that's unusual anywhere. And I certainly don't think we're obligated to look at every public trail or every public right of way and say you have to be able to put your car there because it would fundamentally change the town in a way that would damage a lot of people, and in some cases, would sacrifice safety. But the bottom line is, we don't have a parking problem at the beach. You can park at the beach, and I've done it a million times, and you can walk up and down the beach to a lot of rights of way, you can enjoy the entire beach, and I know that from personal experience, and so does probably almost everybody here. So I think we have to remove the idea and drop the idea that this is really about parking. And with that, the idea that the term classism was used here, as if this is some kind of classist plot, I think is really over the top and really inappropriate. I think it's interesting that some of the public articles I've seen have focused on dogs. I think this issue might be about dogs. It's not really about parking, it's not about some classist plot. But if you're only talking about dogs and people playing with their dogs on the beach, which we, by the way, get emails about sometimes because people don't like dogs running up to them, they're afraid of that, I don't mind it, I love dogs. But if you're only talking about dogs, and I think that's what this is really going on, what's really going on here, then, you know, that wouldn't be as interesting in terms of an article for the Boston Globe.
Would you like me to respond?
I would like you to respond.
No, it's not just about dogs. But you're also leaving out, when you talk about parking at Barrington Beach, you haven't addressed the lack of parking near any of the rights of way in the Alfred Drown neighborhood.
There's a big right of way, it's called the parking.
I'm sorry?
There's a big right of way to the beach, it's called the parking lot. You can walk right onto the beach and walk to any right of way you would like.
Is Barrington Beach the same as the public rights away off Alfred Drown?
Is every park, is every single right of way some special entity that you therefore must have a parking lot around?
Per the state of Rhode Island, for CRMC-designated public rights away, yes, there must be parking.
You must have rights of way, and they are rights of way, and in fact, we have them. But you're talking about cars.
Right. And I'll repeat it.
And you specifically focus on the beach when you're talking about it publicly. I've seen that.
Actually, I've been talking about the Alfred Drown neighborhood as well, and there is no, there is no, you cannot park at Barrington Beach and get to the areas of the shore where the Alfred Drown public rights away gets you.
So then, are you taking all the rights of way that go to the beach off the table?
I'm sorry?
Are you taking all of the rights of way that go to the beach, that connect to the beach, off the table? Are we therefore not talking about that anymore?
No.
Okay, I thought so.
So the CRMC, for state-designated public rights away, they must, by law, have public parking available. So that is one of the requirements for a CRMC-designated public right of way. Why would Barrington propose to move against that standard?
We are proposing to do what is, first of all, consistent with safety. Secondly, consistent with the character and nature of these neighborhoods where you don't want gridlocked traffic and people not being able to get out of their driveway.
If you added six parking spots, you're going to gridlock traffic?
And we are doing it by providing parking, public parking for your car.
Where?
At the beach.
That is not Alfred Drown.
Then you are, in fact, taking all the beach access off the table. It's not about the beach.
No, it is about all of them.
But you are, but there are rights of way.
Please don't put words in my mouth.
There are rights of way that connect to the beach.
Let me make it crystal clear. I am talking about the city of Barrington, the town of Barrington. If it plays by the same rules that CRMC requires you to play by for state-designated public rights away, should make available a small handful of parking spaces at every public right of way, every one of them, without regard.
Every one of them?
Every one of them.
Really?
Yes.
So that might have been a good idea when the right of way was being created, but if we're going, and when you say for everyone, do you mean in less than a mile, or does it have to be within 10 feet?
No, so for example, years ago, there was a big fight at Neat Point. There's a CRMC-designated right of way on Neat Point, goes downhill, I don't remember the name of the street, but there's a tiny little CRMC-designated public right of way there. There was a big buh-haha with the resident who lived nearby, and push came to shove, and it was required to carve out two parking spots, because that's the way CRMC rolls when it comes to the public rights away. And, you know, you're talking about gridlock and all kinds of Armageddon-type stuff, I'm not suggesting that we have wall-to-wall parking. I'm suggesting you find a way to park a half dozen vehicles within a half mile of the public right of way. I don't think that's a hard ask.
I think when you bring up solar fields, the town wants to reduce its carbon footprint. When you bring up athletic fields, the town needs a place for kids to play. When you bring up the beach, it's a solution in search of a problem, and you've been talking about, your focus has been the beach consistently. And now you're trying to broaden that out and pick specific areas where you can have an argument about whether there should be an extra parking spot or two. What if more people want to get there than are actually allowed by the parking that you want to institute there? I think, I think on the whole, the bottom line is, and the main focus has been the beach, and I think you'd have to admit that.
No.
We do have, we do have plenty of parking at the beach. I've never not been able to park there.
You continue to put words into my mouth. The entire time I've done this, when we first started doing this, I produced a map of the parking near the beach public rights away, I produced a map of the parking near the Alfred Drown public rights away. I sent those maps to Town Manager Cunha, he has them. You are absolutely wrong to suggest that my focus is just on the public rights of way at the beach.
Well, then why are you not taking the beach rights of way off the table?
I'm sorry?
Then why are you not taking the beach rights of way off the table, as I asked you?
Why? Because I believe that every public right of way should be available to the public with some reasonably close parking for a small number of parking spots.
But there is reasonably close parking called the beach parking lot.
You believe that's reasonable, I don't.
You said your objective, well, to the extent we can be objective, your objective description was within a half a mile. Is that right?
Right, hopefully closer, and I believe that the structure of the streets allow that to be done. Central Avenue and Alfred Drown is within a couple hundred feet of the conserve beach at the end of Appian Way. Right? I mean, if we really put our minds to it, I'm pretty sure we could figure out where to draw a couple of carefully crafted parking spots to allow maybe residents with parking stickers to be able to come in and enjoy the beach, enjoy the rights of way to get at the beach. I don't think this is an unreasonable thing. I'm really surprised that the pushback is as strong as it is. You should do some research on CRMC-designated public rights away because they have to have parking, because it's not a public right of way if you can't get to it.
CRMC parking is required at CRMC-designated rights away. We have a couple of those in town, and there is parking available. There's no requirement to have parking at every right of way.
No, I understand there's not a requirement on the town-owned ones, but my question to the town council is, why would you propose running our public rights away differently than what CRMC suggests?
Maybe because it might require a taking in some places, but we're not going to do that. I want to ask Mike Ursulow something. Mike, in order to, if we were to remove a no parking, just for example, if we were to say we're interested in moving forward with the manager's item four, could we, do you notify, is there a requirement to notify, I think we ought to, people in those neighborhoods? Do we need to, is there a special kind of notice for that?
So ordinarily, when you amend an ordinance, there's not a requirement for personal notice to individuals. However, given the publicity and given the nature of this, I think it behooves you to notify neighborhoods if you're going to be making these changes. I think it's just reasonable, courteous, let people know so you can hear from both sides of the issue, and then you'll be in a better position to make a decision that's in the best interest of the town.
Right. And so, in order for us to move forward, I'm going to make a proposal that we, we consider an ordinance that would effectively remove parking as set forth in item four as a block, and we'll have people come in and talk to us about their neighborhoods, because it'll be a public hearing and we'll notify them. And then we take on a case-by-case basis the ones that are asterisked in those individual So I'm going to make a motion that we direct our.
Excuse me, I'm not sure if anyone else in the public wanted to talk or not, so I just wanted to point out, I think there may be somebody else in the audience who wanted to weigh in.
Sure, does anybody else want to talk on this? Sure, come forward. Please state your name and your residence, sir.
My name is Shom Ganglani. I live at 85 Upland Way here in Barrington. I've been in Barrington at two different residencies for about five years. And, you know, I And, you know, I, I feel passionately about this. I do feel that it's wrong to infer that the public rights-of-way are public for those who live near them. It seems to me like that's a discriminatory policy. If you don't have access to it, it's not public, period. Also, I had conversed with town council members about this issue back in June. One of the members had reached out to me because I had raised the issue about access for disabled and handicap people, of which I am. I'm a below-the-knee amputee. Thank you for not noticing. And at that time, one of the council members wrote back to me and indicated that they would have no problem allocating some additional spots for handicap parking, regardless of any type of safety issues that have been considered here today for not allowing additional parking. So, I don't know how it's less safe for a handicapped person to have access to park in those areas than it is for a non-handicapped person to have parking access in those areas. That's really just what I wanted to...
It may have been me you spoke with, and I think maybe you misunderstood me. I said that if we don't have enough handicap parking at the beach, we would definitely expand it. The question is whether we have enough there. I wasn't trying to say that we would have handicap parking in front of every... Frankly, it'd be impossible for some of them based on their configuration. And also, having handicap parking there when some of them require a lot of rock, climbing over rocks and going down steps and things, would only mean that somebody could park there. They probably couldn't access it unless we made it handicapped accessible, which is another project.
I understand.
And by the way, we are doing that at, at the Walker Farm. I believe there is a handicapped-accessible ramp into the water. So with our latest project over there, we are doing that. So we're doing it in places where we can.
I guess I'd just like to reiterate that providing access to the beach in one spot for most town members and not allowing people who live in the town the same access across all public rights-of-way is not the same as having access. It just isn't. It's, you have it if you live in that neighborhood only. And it's also, from my perspective, very frustrating, as you probably saw when you went around and did your study, to drive around those neighborhoods and see all the residents in those neighborhoods parking on the street in front of their house whenever they want. Yet, when someone like myself goes, I've got to race back up to my car if I park anywhere other than at Barrington Beach because the residents come down to the beach and say that the police are ticketing. So, I think that's something that the town should also address. Why is it okay for residents in those neighborhoods near public rights-of-way to park on their street in front of their houses without any possible worry of getting a ticket, but for someone who doesn't live there, it's not okay? It's a, it's a double standard that needs to be addressed, and that's really all I'd like to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Anyone else want to be heard on this?
I'm sorry, I had no idea about this topic until I came tonight. It's been fascinating. Thank you, everyone, for speaking about it. I live on the end of a dead-end street, and I, there's a public access to a beautiful field that I enjoy so much. In fact, I recognize this man who just spoke because he walks his dog back there with me. And I love that people from our town park at the end of my street and access that little public access lane to go into St. Andrews Field. I find it a wonderful part of my residency in Barrington. I don't find it threatening at all to have people from other neighborhoods coming, parking at the end of my street, jumping out of their car with their kids, walking down that little path. Sometimes they even walk through my yard because my yard also has a little walkway to the field, and I don't even mind that. So I'm flabbergasted at the resistance and pushback and the fragility that I'm witnessing here tonight of just a simple request. It's so clear, you know, people who are handicapped, who navigate complicated situations all the time, have the ability to decide whether or not there's too many rocks or crags or, you know, hills for them to get to the beach through the public access. It's not for us to determine. It's absurd. There's plenty of places on Alfred Drown. It's 100% different to go to Alfred Drown, bring a kayak, bring a little waterboard or whatever, and pull off the side of the road and walk down, whether, you know, choose if you want to go or not, walk down and enjoy the tranquil waterway there. It's not the same at Water as Barrington Beach. It's a totally different area of Water. It's secluded. It's private. These are different areas. Have you, I'm not sure if people who are discussing this up here and are so opposed have been to these little, these little places where you can walk out. Like, this is, this is crazy. Why not a couple of parking spaces on these very wide roads in, in very desirable neighborhoods to allow people to park a car and go and enjoy the beach? I don't, the resistance is, is disturbing, really. So I personally fully believe that this town should hire a traffic expert, an engineer. It sounds like a very standard practice, and it sounds very smart. Safety is important, and there's no need for us to throw safety out the window. But so is access to the beautiful beaches that we have here. There's absolutely no reason why we can't hire somebody to determine whether it's safe and then provide a few parking spaces to allow residents who are less privileged to park and access the waterways that we have here. That's, this is just really embarrassing.
Anybody else? Sure.
My name's Mike Gilbo. I live off of Clark. And for about 10 years, I've lived in Barrington. Previously, lived in the Soames neighborhood. And to your point earlier, the beach is great. The beach parking lot is great. I never once thought to go park in a neighborhood. And there's tons of parking. For me, and now I live off of Clark, it's really a safety issue. I mean, it's a narrow road, right? If you have a landscaper truck up and down there, you're never going to get an ambulance through there. Just to allow street parking, I think, is crazy. It's unsafe. And with that, I'll leave you.
Thank you. Please.
Hi, Jody Dunn from 40 Bluff Road. I wasn't prepared for this tonight, but I would just like to say thank you for being willing to continue the conversation later and maybe hear from people from the neighborhoods. Because I think a piece of this conversation needs to be not just one man's personal crusade for the prime beach spot, but what is the quality of life we want in our neighborhoods? I live on the corner of Bluff and Governor Bradford, and all day, every day, I see bikers and walkers and strollers and runners, and it's wonderful, and it's safe for them. And I think that's one of the reasons I moved here. I can remember shopping for my house and seeing a kid on a bike with a carton of milk in his basket coming from the grocery store. And I thought, this is where I want to live. I want to live where it's safe for my kids to walk and bike, and I want to be able to walk safely and not have cars jogging in and out to dodge other cars on different sides of the street. That happens sometimes when a landscaper truck or grandparent visits or something, but to create a situation where this is happening all the time for the beach when we know there's a big beach parking lot, we know there's overflow parking at Neyet, and it's okay to encourage people to walk or bike or take a beach cart to get to these public access points, which I'm so glad they're there. But the roads don't go down there. It's part, I think, too, I think one point that needs to be addressed, Mr. Block harps on the fact that, or what he calls a fact, that taxpayers' dollars go to maintaining these public rights-of-way. How much is it, Mr. Carroll? I think they mow it, right? It's grass. He acts like, or talks as if, I feel like he's just stirring the pot and trying to get people riled up over an issue that maybe isn't an issue. And you guys have dedicated a lot of time to this tonight, and it sounds like you're going to maybe dedicate more time, but it's like, enough. And some residents get tired of him always trying to stir up the drama in the newspapers and online and social media. It's too much. Thank you.
Okay. This is, this was not a public hearing, but we will have a public hearing. If we, if we move forward with changing any parking anywhere, it would require a public hearing, so we certainly can revisit these if there is an appetite for it. My suggestion would be that we consider those that are in item four, that we notify the, maybe we can put something in the newspaper with the listing, and we can post something on the, on the website as well. And we'll have to introduce this if, if there is an appetite for it. So I'm going to make a motion that we direct our solicitor to prepare an ordinance changing the parking on the streets listed in item four of the town manager's memorandum. Is there a second?
I second that, and with, while noting that, that this is for consideration, and we want to hear from all people affected by it.
Right, right. This is not a fait accompli. We certainly are open to hearing from folks on each of these roads and in these neighborhoods. Okay, so motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? Counsel Breyer.
I just wanted to add, I support the motion to have the ordinance drafted to allow parking on the streets in section four. And I would like to also have on the agenda, when it's introduced, a deeper discussion on the roads that are listed with mitigations, just to talk about if some parking can be allowed on those streets without negatively impacting quality of life and things like that. I'd just like a, more information about how we could allow parking on some of those streets.
Any further discussion? Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And no abstention that motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Next item on our agenda is to discuss and act on resolutions, and this first resolution is amending, the only resolution really, is amending A225. And basically, I'll just run through it, Jim, but you can tell me if I'm wrong. This, this would, there is, this would make it so the $0 for, it costs nothing for beach access for the, our seniors, and it would add a, I don't have it in front of me, $200, is it $100?
$100.
Oh, yes, a $100 fee, refundable. The idea behind that being, if you pay that fee, you get it back once you have an inspection. The issue is that we often have people who never call for an inspection, and so this would create an incentive for them to call and say, I've finished the building project. Please come and get it. We already do this for decks. And pools, I think.
Pool, yes.
So, we now have inspections for those things, but what we don't have is inspections for a lot of other kinds of things. Once that's done, this would just create that incentive. This does not need to be, because this is just a fee, it doesn't need to be an ordinance, so we can just do this by resolution. Does anyone want to be heard on this? Counsel Breyer.
I had just a couple of questions. One is, is the fee for decks and pools also $100? So this would match that, or is it...
It's $200 for pools and decks. They're usually bigger, more expensive projects.
And then the other, so the other change on this is certified copies. And just in the formatting of the sheet, it was hard to tell, but is certified copies for probate still staying at $1 and only certified copies for land?
Land evidence would stay at $1, and certified copies for probate would increase from $1 to $1.50.
And when people need certified copies, is it many at a time, or is it just one or two?
I'll defer to Mary on that.
First of all, probate has always been $1.50. That was a carryover, $100. So that's why I needed to fix that. And, yes, a lot of people come in and they look at probate files, and then they want copies.
For a certified copy? For a certified copy, right? Is there, can you get a copy without certification?
Yes, they're just copies.
Is it the same cost, or is it...
A certified copy really is $3 plus $1.50.
Okay, so it's $1.50 for copies. Maybe we want to modify this just to say copies rather than certified copies, just to be clear. Anything else?
Yeah, I was just, so, I mean, going from $1 to $1.50, it seems fine, but if people are doing, oh, right, so it's been $1.50. So then the questions move.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to pass the resolution amending chapter 8225 as presented and amended.
Second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to discuss and act on ordinances, and the first is to introduce an ordinance. As, as many of you folks know, in order to pass an ordinance, we need to do it in two steps. First, we introduce it. Typically, we don't have much discussion on it. And then we hold a public hearing on it. So tonight, there'll be two that are up for potential, or excuse me, one that's up for potential introduction, and if that is the case, we will set a public hearing to, to pass that. And this one is ordinance 2021-18, an ordinance amendment to chapter 41 Police Department Rules and Regulations to add section 41-101 Relief of Injured and Deceased Police Officers. To be clear, this would actually apply to firefighters as well. Is that right? So although it says police officers, the language elsewhere makes it clear it's for firefighters as well. And this would be, as proposed, retroactive. So it would be retroactive to take into, if passed in this form, to take into account Cindy Caputo, Officer Caputo's widow. So do I hear a motion to introduce that ordinance?
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next, two public hearings. This first one, 2021-15, an ordinance amendment to chapter 33, section 33-35 Hospital Medical and Dental Coverage. I am reopening the public hearing, which we continued. Is there anyone from the public who wanted to be heard on this? This has to do with what we currently offer our employees, our non-union employees, as an incentive, and what we might offer. Okay, members of the council. Counsel Breyer, you had raised concerns about this.
Yes, my, my concerns remain. I support the change to exclude spouses of employees, but continue to believe that it's inequitable to exclude employees who are under the age of 26.
And I have a different view, that it's not a question of pay equity. This is merely an incentive. And it, the goal here is basically when spouses sit down across the kitchen table and they say, are we going to go with your insurance or my insurance? We'd rather they went with somebody else's insurance. It's cheaper for us, so we're willing to create an incentive by paying the Barrington-employed spouse something. That same incentive isn't necessary in the case of parents and children because those children, the parents are going to get coverage. They can't get on their, their child's coverage, so it's not that same situation. So that's, I don't think it's a pay equity issue. I disagree with you on that. But I did think the language of the proposed statute had some confusing things in it, and so I'm proposing some changes to it. First, let's just clarify, if the employee is married to an employee of the town or Barrington Public Schools, the employee shall not be entitled to the medical buyback benefit... Public Schools, the employee shall not be entitled to the medical buyback benefit or an additional medical dental plan. I wanted to be clear about that. They either, one or the other takes the plan, and that's, I think, the original goal. But I also wanted to add a clarifying sentence that would say that individuals under 26 years of age who waive their right to health insurance and dental insurance due to insurance coverage by their parents shall not be entitled to the medical buyback. This has been narrowed, because there are going to be situations where you'll have someone under 26 years old who is married, and they, their spouse decides they want, they can go for that insurance, and we want to offer that incentive to them. So this would only apply in a situation where that person has their parents' insurance. If they don't have their parents' insurance, we will certainly offer them coverage, that is the law, and we would certainly do that. So that's my proposal, and I kind of, I put it, there's a copy in the back if anyone wants to look at it, but I put it in red line so we could see it and clarify it.
I agree with your view that this is an incentive, and I believe that view applies to employees under 26. We want to incentivize them to remain on their parents' plan. It's less expensive for the town. If I'm an employee who's under 26, I can choose to stay on my parents' plan, or I can choose to be on the Barrington plan.
Right.
We want those employees, it's less money if they choose to remain on their parents' plan, so we should incentivize that. We shouldn't exclude based on whether it's their parents' plan or their spouse's plan, because it's of no consequence to Barrington who else's plan they're enrolled on. It's just incentivizing it to not be Barrington's plan.
Yeah, so it's of no consequence to Barrington, but that's not the way the incentive works. The incentive is to create an incentive for the couple, let's say, the people involved who have choices between insurance, to select someone else's insurance. The parents can never be on our insurance. That's just, you can't have that as a group insurance. Whereas with spouses, you know, me and my spouse are sitting across the table, I work for the town of Barrington, one of us is going to have coverage. And we're trying to create an incentive, so it's the person who's not working for Barrington, so we pay that incentive. That doesn't apply in the case of parents, because they're always going to have that coverage.
So I'm just not understanding if, take the employee, whether they are under 26 or they're older and married, either way, that employee is choosing either outside of Barrington plan or inside of Barrington plan. The conversation is just with a parent or a spouse. Either way, it's the employee who's choosing.
I disagree, because it's not the employee who chooses, it's the parents who choose. It's different than with the spouse. And so with the employee, and I also think it kind of creates for these young employees a structural kind of deficit, not exactly right. But they're going to get, what is it, $3,000 if they, if we did?
Thirty-two hundred seventy-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents.
So they get $3,200 if we were to do it this, the way that you're proposing. They would get $3,200 for choosing their parents, not really choosing, but having their parents do it. They turn 26, they lose the $3,200, and they have to pay $1,500, which is their cost for an individual plan. So they've now taken a pay cut of $4,500, $4,700.
So if I told you that next year you have to pay $1,500, does that mean you don't want $3,000 this year? I mean, I would take the $3,000 this year. Either way, I have to pay $1,500 next year.
Sure, but we're really talking about compensation, not pay equity. And I would leave compensation up to the town management, so.
Well, this is already, I mean, it's an ordinance that was established in 2002 that we're currently not abiding. I mean, right now, the ordinance is that these employees are entitled to this pay. So we're talking about removing it from them. Now, they haven't been receiving it yet, because we've been operating under a different policy than the ordinance dictates, but we're talking about removing a benefit to which employees are currently entitled.
Well, I think certainly that's great advocacy for those employees, but for Barrington, this is a better position for Barrington.
I disagree.
Okay. So I'm going to make a motion that we adopt this amendment, the one that's set forth in front of you, that says, that strikes the first part of Item C, that adds the second portion, and deletes the redlined pieces, and inserting the, notwithstanding the foregoing A, if the employee is married to an employee of the town or Barrington Public Schools, the employee should not be entitled to the medical buyback benefit or a, an additional medical dental plan, and B, individuals under 26 years of age who waive their right to health insurance or dental insurance due to their parents' coverage, due to insurance coverage by their parents, shall not be entitled to the medical buyback. That's my motion. Is there a second?
I'll second this. One of the things that's critical for me is the coverage by the parents, and those who are not covered by parents would be entitled to the medical buyback. So I will second that motion as edited.
Okay. Any further discussion? Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries, four to one. So, next item on the agenda is to discuss and act on the public hearing for the renewal of our ordinance declaration of emergency. I am opening the public hearing. Does anyone from the public wish to be heard on the renewal of the declaration of emergency? Anyone from the council? Does anyone want to make a motion to pass the ordinance as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I abstain.
Oh, okay. One abstention. Four to zero to one. Next item on our agenda is to discuss and act on bids. The first one is to award the bid for the Fire Department Emergency Management Consultant, Chief Baset.
We're just completing the first year of having an emergency manager coordinator for the town, and the way the, it was bid on, we had quite a successful bid process a year ago. We selected Norman Menard, and, but it was just for one year, and we'd like to continue with that emergency manager position, so we re-advertized, we only received the one bid from Norman Menard, and this year, we wrote it that it could continue up to, up to two years for that position. So I'm recommending that it be awarded to Norman Menard for a term of not to exceed two years.
Okay. Questions for Chief? No questions. Okay, does anyone want to make a motion?
So moved. Well, I'll, I thought you were, I thought you were going to set up the motion.
But I will make a motion to approve the renewal of the Emergency Management Consulting Agreement with NDM Consulting in the amount of $25,000. And just want to stress the importance of this position. I think it's great that the town has something like this, and it's a real benefit when we're dealing with, you know, so many issues with climate change and increased storms and everything that comes with that, so I'm glad to see this.
I second the motion, and also prefer it when the council president does it volleyball style.
Motions were made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the purchase of an engine and pumper, Chief Baset.
I am recommending to the manager and to the council that we purchase a new fire engine pumper. We're currently talking about a 16-year-old vehicle with, I think I called in 111,000 miles on it today. Once again, the NFPA standards talk to us about vehicles and their replacement and their life as a first-line piece of apparatus, which is 15 years. But this engine is starting to show somewhere, and it's starting to cost us some repair monies. And keeping with the standard, we do. This town is great with their capital budget allocations. They recognize the need for these vehicles. This is a vehicle that will last for 15 years without any problem, the new vehicle. In 2005, when we bid this, the last truck, we were talking about a vehicle that cost $450,000. I'm now talking to you about a vehicle that costs $732,128. It's quite an increase, but that's amazing what vehicles cost. They're all individually made, they're individually specified. I had a committee that's been working for months, looking at the differences in vehicles, and I'm quite pleased with what they've come up with, even though it's a considerable amount of money. But we have the money in our capital apparatus and equipment account for these exact purposes. The next vehicle we'll be purchasing will be a rescue truck in two or three more years, and we'll certainly be able to pay for that when it comes. So you will have your front line, the Elata we received, which has been in service exactly one year, and approximately a year from today, you would have a new engine also, which will serve the town for at least the next 15 years. So I'm recommending that we award the bid to the Greenwood Emergency Vehicles, North Alamo, Massachusetts, for a cost of $732,128.
Questions for Chief? Okay, if there are no questions, do I hear a motion to authorize the purchase of a 2022 E1 1500 GPM engine pumper from Greenwood Emergency Vehicles LLC in the amount of $732,128?
When you put it that way, I'm so moved. Second, that was easy.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is to award the Bay, award a bid for the Bay Team, Project Director Mental Health Awareness, and Denise Salves is here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For those of you don't, that you don't know me, I'm Denise Salves. I am the director of the Barrington Prevention Coalition, known as the Bay Team. We applied for and were awarded a mental health awareness training grant of $125,000 for five years from SAMSA, the Substance Abuse Mental Health Services Administration, and we then posted a request for qualifications for the position of project director, and we would like to award Laura Cook the position in the amount of $36,400 a year.
So, Bay Team does fantastic work, and I'm really, really glad that this is something you're doing. In my day job, we have 20 schools that I'm general counsel for, and we have seen a tremendous increase in mental health issues among really young kids and high school kids. So I'm glad to see this. This has been a tough couple of years for everyone.
We're pretty proud of this grant. We're one of only three awarded in the state of Rhode Island, and only 145 were awarded nationwide.
Oh, that's great.
So.
Thank you. So do I hear a motion to authorize the award of a contract for program director for Bay Team's mental health awareness training grant to Laura Cook in the amount of $36,400?
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is to award a bid for the Planning Department. This is for Watson Avenue Real Estate Development Consultant Services. And Phil, if you could tell us about this, please.
Well, this was put out to bid in anticipation of needing to go through a very robust planning process to figure out if we actually do acquire the property, which is still 100%, but in case we did, to create a plan that's realistic and reflects like reality and also the community goals. So there's a lot of, there are a lot of professions that need to get involved in this, including providing the planning consultant that would help guide a visioning process, working with this committee that was, that's been set up with numerous stakeholders of various, from various committees in, like, in the community. And so we put this out to bid, and we had received three proposals. The proposals were reviewed as part of a, by a three-member review committee, consisting of myself, a member of the Housing Board, who is actually, he does senior housing for a living in the Boston area development, and a member of the Planning Board. So we reviewed the proposals, we interviewed each consultant, and we conducted reference checks. And through that process, we, it's a difficult call, but, because there are good, very good consultants here, involved here, but we felt that the consulting firm, as the lead consultant would be forward planning, based out of New York City, along with the team that's outlined in the memo, would be the best fit for this project, and the amount of $128,420 is the maximum amount that would be spent on this project without further council authorization for additional money. And this would utilize money left over from the financing, and subject to the town completing acquisition of the property.
Okay.
I don't know if you have any questions about this recommendation?
Sure. Questions? Okay, no questions? Do I hear a motion to authorize the contract with forward planning of 41 Madison Avenue, New York, New York, in the amount of $128,420 to provide real estate development consultant services to plan the future use of the former Carmelite Monastery property, utilizing funding from the financing approved for the purpose, for the purchase, and subject to the town completing the acquisition of the property?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion?
Yes, echoing what the Housing Board of Trustees sent to us, I think we don't need to rush into this process, and it would be wise to let the committee meet once and discuss what the end goals should be and what should be requested of a consultant prior to spending this much money, encumbering this much money. I think it would be good to make sure the community is going to be aligned with the goals of the respondents to the RFP.
The RFP, all of the RFP respondents, they're not coming with a plan.
No plan.
Right, they're coming to help develop the goals and the plan.
Yeah, I mean, it's a very, there's a lot of activity in the beginning to do, first of all, do the fact gathering, just basic fact gathering, and also the visioning. That's a very big piece, and it's, nothing's, everything, nothing's been brought to the, to us from them. They want to hear from us, so. I would recommend against engaging in conversation that doesn't involve the consultant, that's going to need to get us to the finish line. I would say they should be involved in the very, very beginning. That's why, that's why we want to do a visioning process. They want to hear from the various stakeholders. And part of that is that they manage a stakeholder input process, where you might have someone who's very vocal, that might dominate the conversation, and you have another person who has a very valid interest in this project, it might be a little bit, you know... who has a very valid interest in this project that might be a little bit, you know, a little bit kind of shy about bringing their viewpoint forward, but when you have this kind of team in place, they can, they can manage all of the, all of the various input. And there's 15 people as part of this, this committee. And they can, they can manage all of this and get the, and just kind of let everybody have kind of equal footing when you start to engage and you don't have one interest dominating, you know? That can happen. So this really helps the conversation when you have these professionals that are not part of the town. They're, they're outside consultants. They can bring this third-party expertise. They have, they know how to bring this project throughout the, to the, to the end, but they want to hear how to start. So I would recommend getting them involved sooner, right, at the very beginning. Otherwise, you have to repeat what you just tried to, all these discussions were without them in the room. They have to learn what, when they weren't there. So I would say this helps the conversation. It helps the stakeholder, you know, getting their input in a valid way.
So I echo Counselor Breyer's concerns, only because we both are the liaisons for the Housing Board of Trustees, so I have to admit fully that this is coming from one board and not input from other boards. But the, I did actually hear from another constituent who recommended someone who was not on our, our list, who had not submitted a proposal. And my concern is that, that with the speed at which we've selected someone and the speed at which the whole process has moved, is that there are people who may have been interested, who may have been qualified, who have not responded to the proposal. I personally would prefer on holding on this until we have more information, although I do understand the, the need for stakeholder management and especially in the input process. But I do think that some of these consultants are specialized and may be responding with the inclination of where the project may be going as opposed to a broad open, open plate. So I would, I would not support this, but mostly because I think I would support it at a later point, once we had more information.
So part of the reason that, that you want to move quickly is because of the next FTM. Is that fair?
Yeah. Sorry, I'm like, I don't know what's happening. No one can breathe in here. But yeah, I mean, the, there's a decision that has to get made at the next FTM, once we understand the economics, whether we can save the building or not. And so that decision would be whether to be able to tear it down, honestly. That needs to get clarified. If, if the voters say to keep it, then we have a very clear path for putting out an RFP for the development. So, but until that issue's cleared one way or the other, developer's going to be hesitant to bid on possibly being able to tear it down and rebuilding something. But they don't know until the voters actually vote on it. So that, I think you need to get to that, that decision point at the next FTM, and then probably have another special FTM, unfortunately, because I don't think the town would want to own it for another long extended period of time. Whether the economy is good, you want to get it, get this out there and get the RFP out to get these responses.
So I'm sorry, I'm trying to make sure I understood you. Are you saying that if we don't get it done before this FTM, we'll have to have a special FTM? Or you think we're going to have?
There's actually, I don't think there's any choice. You're going to have to clear that issue, whether you're preserving it or possibly tearing it down. You have to make that decision based on this process.
Right. But I guess, just to be clear, I'm asking about, we have a scheduled FTM, end of May 2022.
Right.
Are you saying that in addition to that, we'll need a special one?
It to, I believe, Mike, right, if you sell a piece of property, you have to get the FTM approval to sell it. So until you get a specific developer proposal.
Yeah. If in fact a sale takes place, or you want to have a sale prior to, you would need a special FTM, because if you in fact purchase it, it will become town property.
Right. Okay. So I think I understand what you're saying. So we would have, the goal would be to get something to the scheduled current FTM, and if that, that FTM, the proposal is to tear it down, and the folks at the FTM say, we're not interested, would we have to have a special one then, or couldn't we do it all at once?
It's just, it's just, it's just a process of getting this whole visioning process done and having a building program that the town supports, getting all these issues cleared, you're going to, you're not going to have a developer proposal yet before that FTM, but you have to, you should clear, you should have a decision for the voters, and just anticipation of that, of whether the, a development proposal, when you put out that RFP, should allow for that building to come down and it be rebuilt. I mean, so that, just talking it out to these consultants, that's, that's an issue that's got to get cleared up one way or the other before you can put out the RFP, because developers won't be confident unless they know for certain that voters will approve a development that replaces the building.
Okay.
And then, so then they, another special RFP, FTM, to approve the sale based on the recommended developer proposal.
Right.
So the special FTM after the next FTM. That's just, that's just the way it seems to be falling.
Okay. So the whole thing that, we've, we've got council members who are saying, let's, let's take a breath, and we'll hold the first meeting, and then we'll, we'll decide on a consultant. I guess I'm trying to see if there's a reason why we ought to move more quickly than that. And my understanding was that you're, you were trying to, you know, schedule this quickly enough so that we could get something done by May, but is that, am I wrong about that?
That's the anticipated schedule.
Okay.
From this outline on the proposed deliverables that would line us up for the May meeting.
Okay.
But that's what I was saying. I would recommend getting them involved at the very beginning, so they're hearing this conversation and help, help facilitate it.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else on the council? Vice President Hum?
When is the, the first stakeholder meeting?
That's not been scheduled yet. We, I was, you know, one thing, trying to resolve this consultant issue, which I know there's, there's a.
In the town planner world, this RFP is a town planner thing. I mean, in most cases, we wouldn't even have a committee. The, as Phil, I think, explained is, the RFP is for the guy to help this committee move forward. So getting it done quicker on the, you know, he had a vetting process, he had members, two other members that selected it. I think moving forward with it makes sense so that we can get on board, get this guy, get this consultant working the issue. He's going to work in, you know, in concert with the committee, but the committee doesn't need to, nor should they be a part of the RFP selection. That's not their function. The consultant's job is to help the committee move forward.
Right. So, okay. Yes, Vice President Hum?
Yeah, and, and thank you for the comments. And actually, in fact, I, I asked that question, but I think I, sitting here today, I really appreciate the Housing Board's email. I thought it was a well-thought-out email, and I understood why it was sent. I would support moving forward with it today. I think, having worked with Mr. Hervey a lot in the past and knowing his level of expertise and familiarity with these types of things, I, I fully trust the process that he ran, and I, I don't see any reason why not to move forward with him having gone through this process in the additional context that we had tonight with respect to other town stakeholders being part of that process, a member from the planning board who, we had a resignation today, but I assume was also a member of the Economic Development Commission at the time, and a member of the Housing Board of Trustees, which adventure to guess was probably more than we would do for an RFP under, under normal circumstances anyway. And also the fact that there isn't a plan set, and a plan, a specific plan wasn't part of the RFP, but this does give that opportunity for the consultant to be involved in the process even from day one, and those ideas can be molded. So it, it, I think it would make for more efficient meetings, especially since there hasn't been a meeting yet, that if you have that consultant on board with a blank slate, maybe the consultant has ideas, the board will have lots and lots of good ideas. So I think, working together, I think it's more efficient to have that consultant on board earlier rather than later.
Great. I agree with that, but I get, go ahead, please.
No, I think Vice President Hum makes a compelling case, and as does Mr. Hervey and Mr. Cunha, and I tend to fall on that side of this, this equation.
So Counselor Breyer?
Yeah, I appreciate everything you said, and also, you know, respect Mr. Hervey's expertise and have seen, you know, the projects he's led in the past. For me, it comes down to, I know the email came from one board, but it was expressive of concerns that are felt throughout the community, that we're moving really quickly on this, and we haven't brought the community with us. And I think this is a sign that we are doing so, and that's why I still support waiting until the, the committee. It's, it's not that I don't think it's going to be an adequate job, I just, I'd like to take another step to bring the community along with us, because everything about this has been very quick.
Okay. A motion has been made and seconded, and that motion is to move forward with the proposal from our municipal leadership. So unless there's further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
The motion carries three to two. Thank you. Next item is to award a bid from the Department of Public Works, and this is for a new dump truck.
Thank you. We recently went to bid, these are items that we had approved in our capital budget by the planning. And we're noticing this definitely supply chain issues. We went to bid for a small dump truck. We had no interest at all. We actually called vendors that we deal with, and everyone's basically concerned about materials, getting trucks, putting them together, and the lead time and how long it's going to take. So anyway, we had one bid on the 41,000, the large dump truck, which is a sander and a snowplow also. We had one bid on the commercial front mower and the field mucking robot, no bid on it also. So we're recommending the award of the large dump truck to AT Northern out of Warwick. The price, we actually went to bid two years ago for a similar dump truck, same cabin chassis, a different body. We actually designed and built the body to what we need for specifications. Two years ago, the truck was about $162,000. It was a more lightweight body and a more lightweight snowplow. We beefed this truck up a little bit so it would be used for storm debris. It has special barn doors, so we can load a brush if we have a hurricane, but it's also a sander, so it's, it's multipurpose. So over a two-year period, it's about a three and a half percent increase in the price over the three years, I'm sorry, the two years. So it is within reason, and we have dealt with this vendor. He actually was the low bidder two years ago. One thing I'm also noticing, it's an international truck. What we're noticing is the, the vendor, let's say Minute Man out of Boston, won't bid in this region. So it's only the, the international truck dealer out of Warwick, which was Coastal International. So we also noticed that with John Deere. Only, we only get one bid with John Deere, and it's the local out of Swansea. So, so we're seeing different things going on, but this is a realistic price. It's a very good, I think it's a good price for right now. It used to take about six to eight months to get this truck, and now we're looking at one to almost two years to get this truck. So even if we order it tomorrow, it could take 18 months to get the truck, so. And, and these trucks are critical. We have a fleet of nine large dump trucks. Only six of those are sanders, so we, we need those for snowstorms. All nine plow snow, they all have their own plow route. So we're recommending to go with AT Northern out of Warwick for $176,544.27. And we're recommending to go with a commercial front mower with Ed and Matt's Equipment Services out of Greenville for $12,613.92. And I hope you, you know, you support this.
Questions? Okay. Do I hear a motion to authorize the purchase of a 41,000 gross vehicle weight dump truck with a plow from AT Northern of Warwick in the amount of $176,544.27?
So moved. Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Do I hear a motion to authorize the purchase of a commercial front mower from Ed and Matt Equipment Services, Inc. in the amount of $12,613.92?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So now we get to set the agenda for Monday, November 1. We've got to deal with probate court selection. We talked about an ad hoc COVID committee, kind of to look at lessons learned and things like that, and we could, we could address that at that meeting. And then we also, that's, sure.
Excuse me for one second. I'm wondering if it might be premature to have that set for to the next meeting, as we're, in theory, gathering ideas. Talking about the ideas potentially and setting up the committee at the same time might end up being a lot.
Yeah.
So I just want to, you know, I just want to hedge, and if it's the right time, great. If it's not the right time, you know, December is fine, too, so.
Okay.
But just wanted to kind of put that out there, and we can make that decision as it gets closer to the agenda time.
Great. So that's fine. The next item, though, introduction of an ordinance amending the zoning for outdoor dining, that is a lesson learned, and a good one, I think. So that's something we'll do. And then designation, I don't know what this is, designation of assets from the Masiello Estate.
Ms. Masiello, in her will, designated $202,000 to the town of Barrington.
Oh, that's right.
With no, no restrictions. So I think Town Manager's Farewell Gift might be an appropriate place to put that. But, you know, I was thinking, we can talk about it next month, but Spencer Trust is probably a good place to throw that money. I'm not sure, I, I know of any other place that we're in desperate need.
Yeah.
But that's something we can talk about next month.
Great. Great idea.
I actually, I have a question about the introduction of the zoning ordinance for outdoor dining. I believe the state order allowing it is through, is it through April of 2022?
I believe it's through the end of 2022. I have to check, but the state has.
So what? So that, that being the case, it might make sense to wait until the ad hoc COVID committee is set up and have them kind of evaluate what that ordinance could be, because there's no rush to get it done sooner, because the state already allows it, so.
But just one distinction just to keep in mind, so that applies to public property, you know, town property, not to private property.
Okay.
So if someone's out in a private parking lot, if zoning is, doesn't address that, that person's going to get closed down, as opposed to someone who's using a sidewalk or, so it might make sense to, other communities have, Jacob, and I think it makes sense for us to look at it.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Okay. Anything else? And, yes, okay.
I'm glad Mr. Hervey's still here. Much like Vice President Hum, I have something that's kind of tentative. I think the Open Space Committee has been talking about the future of South Lake Drive, and we'd like to be able to, and I share their view, that, that we should be able to maintain that as hikeable, walkable, and we should be taking some action toward that, realizing that future. I don't know, and Mr. Hervey's here and may be able to inform, whether we would be far enough in that process in terms of bringing in a consultant, possibly where we could discuss that, or if November would be premature, and we should bounce that to December or January. And I would, I would defer to him on the subject, but it is something we, we'd like to move forward on.
They said they want to do that.
So I think, I haven't gotten a price yet for an engineer. We're trying to figure out what's underneath that surface, just do some test pits and other, and, and engineering kind of analysis. So I don't think that's going to raise, it's going to be such a high fee that we have to come to the council for that, but that would help us get to the point where we might understand that.
understand the actual scope of the project, the potential costs, whether different options. So, I think we can get some preliminary work done in the next couple of months, then have a clear picture.
Typically, how long would that take before you think that the council would then make some operative decisions with regard to that? What would we be looking at to scale that out?
If you have to come to the council for the?
Once we, once we sort of determine a plan that the council has to act upon, how, what do we, what do you think we'd be looking at roughly?
For designing it and bidding it out and everything? Probably, it might go to CRMC, I don't know. Depends, might have to hit CRMC, but that could add some time. Then the, then the planning process, design process, probably at least six, eight months.
Okay. Okay. So, we're, yeah, I guess we're premature on that.
What we could do at the next meeting is vote to ask the, just kind of assign it to the Open Space Committee to, you know, discuss proposed use of that property. It'd be contingent on stuff that, that Phil's doing in terms of the engineering, because it could be, you know, a lot involved in removing the brick or whatever. But, and we wouldn't need to set a deadline for it, but we could get them thinking about it, if that makes sense.
Yeah, they have a general, as Phil can attest, they have sort of a general idea of where they, where they think it should go, but if, in terms of more specifics and more, and firmer objectives, I think that would be, I think that would be helpful. Again, I'd look at your opinion on that, because you're involved in it as well, Phil.
Yeah, and the more we dig into it, with the, with the engineer on board, it might raise, it could be, go beyond that 9,500 bucks to, to require council approval. So, you'd look at the scope, and then they could, they could work with the Open Space Committee to really flesh out some real good concepts that, that could be done based on what they know is under the surface and what, what the kind of work is needed to get that upgraded to be a good trail.
Yeah, I think just, given that we did permanently close it, and there are neighbors, people living in the area, people who've used it, they want to know what's going to become of it, I think it behooves us to communicate somewhat that this is not off our radar screen, and we are, we're moving forward.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? And of course, if there's anything anybody thinks of in the interim, just let me know, and we can put it on the agenda for November 1. Do I hear a motion to move into executive session in accordance with Rhode Island General Law's 42465A5, acquisition of property and discuss the placement of executive session minutes from September 13, 2021, for the Town Council Agenda on November 1, 2021?
So moved.
Is there a sec? Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We are in executive session.